Good evening and welcome to the zoning commission regular meeting for September twelfth, twenty twenty four at seven P M. The meeting is being held here in Brookfield High School auditorium at forty five one Middleville Road. If you please all stand. I'll have the members of the commission introduce yourselves. Sorry for my lack. We have to deal with our own personal microphones. We have to turn our hand back and forth.
Donnie Seal Fontana, alternate.
Winner meant member.
Anthony Pupucci, vice chairman. Kurt Timmerman, chairman.
Sean Turner, secretary.
Adblocker's member, at the floor, please. The this past Monday, September ninth, Brookfield blessed somebody who served on this commission for twenty five of the twenty nine year period from nineteen eighty two to two thousand eleven. And his name was Stanley Parker. During that time, he chaired the commission for thirteen years. I believe he served as vice chairman for probably half a dozen years that. But he passed away at the age of eighty seven. I think it's an understatement to say that he did a lot of work for the commission. So we ask that we engage in a moment of silence at the chairman's pleasure.
All right, so tonight we have all the regular members. So we're going to proceed with alternate. First agenda, do we do you do we have the zoning enforcement department? All right, that's next next meeting. All right. Fifty eight Old Gray's Bridge Road, appeal from three hundred and five. Is the applicant for fifty eight Old Gray's Bridge Road? No, okay. We'll we'll table that. Should we go over the letter from Prince of Peace? Yeah, so we received a letter from Prince of Peace. We weren't able to get to it last time. If I have Tony, if you could read that letter into the record and do some discussion.
I've got a letter from Prince of Peace, one nineteen Junction Road, Brookfield, Connecticut, to the town zoning committee. Dear members of the town zoning committee, I am writing formally, formally, wow, formally request that a plan for use and redevelopment submitted by Old Gray Holdings at one oh three Junction Road be deemed null and void pursuant to the rules and regulations of the town of Brookfield. As you're aware from prior correspondence dated June twelfth, twenty twenty four, the contract of sale indeed between Old Gray Holdings and Prince of Peace Lutheran Church required specific provisions that were were to be part of any zoning, land use, development, and application for the sale. These requirements included the following: no earth processing, including screening of material or storage of piles such as sand, topsoil, or aggregate; no rock crushing; no contractors yard as defined in the town of Brookfield C T zoning regulations; all exterior lighting shall be fully shielded, emphasis added, and not dispelled onto the church property. Upon any changes in the use or development, the owner shall work with the town of Brookfield and the church, emphasis added, to develop the buffer zone and planting acceptable to both parties in conformance to the recommendations developed by the House of Housatonic Valley Association. In its application to the town of Brookfield, Old Gray Holdings failed to provide essential and correct information concerning its plan for development. See section eight dot two B four and eight dot three B four. Prince of Peace is the adjacent property to the owner and was never notified of the plan of development. Moreover, the church was not even consulted concerning the development of the landscape buffer zone between the two properties. The decision to grant these permits without any public hearing or input concerning the harmony to the adjacent church property or its effect on the church activities is in antithesis of the town's procedures itself. Indeed, eight dot four, the two specifically requires that the approval consideration, the proposed use shall be in harmony with the surrounding area and shall contribute to its desirable and orderly development. Furthermore, Article eight point five E, section B, requires prospective boards to consider whether the location, nature, and height of the building's walls, defenses, land activities, and the nature and extent of the landscaping in the site will be such that the use shall not hinder or discourage the appropriate development and use of the adjacent land building or impair the value thereof. A proposed landscape plan will adversely affect the appropriate use of the adjacent church property as the House of worship and impair the value of the land therefore. Since the application by Old Gray Holding did not disclose the required input by Prince of Peace, Prince of Peace, or the Housatonic Valley Association concerning the landscape plan or plan of development, the board was provided with incorrect information from the outset. According to the Prince of Peace Church requests, the town of Brookfield be the grant permits null and void pursuant to the town's procedures, rules, and regulations. Finally, as stated in the earlier correspondence, we remain willing to discuss and modify a plan and landscape development that comports with the information requirements omitted from the initial application. Sincerely, Arain Levy, Compliment President.
Motion for a letter from Prince of Peace Church received August eighth, twenty twenty four, the town attorney for her interpretation.
Do you have a second for that?
Second.
Thank you. Some discussion. Now, let me ask, we had reached out to the the property that's being developed right now, and they were going to do any changes or something? Were they going to change the way they're developing that property as far as, well, there?
I'm not I'm not comfortable having discussion.
No, but there is some additional information that that the land use has to contact. Yeah, I'm just trying to get some information for discussion to decide. All in favor of accepting the town attorney? All right, review of the events of the previous meetings, July eleventh, twenty twenty four, and August eighth, twenty twenty four. Does anybody have a chance to review the minutes? Take a motion to accept. We'll do the July eleventh first, twenty twenty four.
Any motion to approve the minutes from July eleventh, twenty twenty four?
All right, second?
Second.
Thank you, Sean. Any discussion on the amendments? I'm hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'll take a motion to accept the minutes, August eighth meeting, twenty twenty four. Thank you, Matt. And the second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tony.
To complement our recording, we're keeping a very long meeting.
Yes, it's lasted, it's almost eleven. Yeah, it's a lot of words. Any discussion for actions or amendments? No, so all in favor of accepting the minutes?
Motion move by at seven and eight two now.
Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Tony. This is just to get these small applications out of the way before I commence public hearing. Do you have a second? Tony, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Against the extensions? All right, that's unanimous. All right, moving to six is nothing. So seven, old business, thirteen Granite Drive, application Z dash twenty four dash forty one. Is anybody here for that?
The second time, the third time.
So any motion to continue that?
Do not hear the three times until we have the nine without prejudice.
This is not a, this.
Because it was on the second June.
Yeah, it was. It's been three months.
Or is it dying out of the?
All right.
Motion to deny without prejudice because it's been on our agenda three regular meetings.
Yeah. So the motion was to deny without prejudice because the applicant passed himself into meetings.
I'll second that.
Coin seconded. Any discussion beyond what we had? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So the motion fails. We may.
Your chairman asked a question about that. Is it indeed five thousand cubic yards, is it?
It's not a case of discussion.
You won't know until they're coming for us. All right, application eight to eight, bond release two ninety one. So we have a bond release from Delendon, formerly known as Delendon, now called Charter, of Brookfield. It's for completing the completing the driveway. So.
What are the others or steps?
Yes.
Take a motion to recommend to the board selection that they release the bond concerning the ninety one level.
All right, thank you, Matt.
Second.
Thank you, Tony. Any discussion on the bond? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? No, extension? No. That passes unanimously. All right, the next one is setting the public hearing, eight fifty four Federal Road, application Z dash twenty four dash fifty one. Can I get a motion to accept the public hearing? That's all we're doing tonight. We're not.
Motion to set a public hearing, eight five four Federal Road, application Z dash twenty four dash five one, for Thursday, November twenty six.
All right, thank you, Matt. Do I have a second?
Second, Matt.
One more? Thank you, one. Any discussion on the public hearing on that date? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? No. So that passes unanimously. And the, let's see, the next one, eight C, seven fifty six Federal Road, application Z dash twenty four dash fifty five. Is anybody here for for that? Okay, sir, if you'd like to come up to the podium, to the microphone, and present what you want to do, we do have your application here, so we can look at it. So if you could, your name and your address for the record?
L D R, seven fifty six Federal Road. Seven fifty six Federal Road, Port of the Rust.
And what is it that your application, if you could describe it first?
We're looking to put a perg lawn in our patio, so an existing patio.
And so we do have pictures here. If everybody sees your package, there's already a patio there. They normally have umbrellas and everything. So this is going to be open on the top?
Uh, the top? No, it's not going to be open. It's just going to be open pretty much.
Is it going to be all glass or is it glass and screen?
Uh, there's going to be glass on the sides. No.
It's black.
It's black. Black.
No.
And these are, these colors in your application are accurate?
It's black. Yep.
Does the commissioner have any questions?
Is there another means of egress?
Nope. There wasn't required.
So you want the fire marshal to present your plans to the building department and everything?
Well, it's an existing patio that doesn't require.
Same as the protection outlet.
Oh, yeah. So they're, that's, all we're doing is just enclosing it, just so it doesn't go into the water.
No, but you could, if there's a problem, you could go out.
You can, yeah, exactly. Do this. Just the way it is right now.
Are there any other questions from the commission members? We have, oh, accept the motion to approve. If you have more questions.
So please.
Did require another means of egress in case you can't get out the original door to get in, like a sliding glass door?
No, we're not allowed to put that.
You aren't?
Because there's sidewalks all the way around. Because then we block the sidewalks. So right now, we have two doors, two very large doors that enter the building.
So that's how you enter the patio?
Yep. You go through the inside, and then you go into the patio.
I guess my question is if there's a problem inside and there's no other means of egress to get out of that.
Because she still exists without the patio, without the door. There's two other exits outside. There's one on the back building, and there's one in the front.
Okay.
I have a question. Those windows, are they solid or are they going to fall down?
They're going to come down to a railing.
So the two top ones are going to come down to the bottom?
Yep. Just to provide another safety measure for them.
And you're going to have electric, like as a fan or something in there? It looks like a fan. You're going to have electric?
Pretty much everything.
Lights.
Any other questions from the commission? All right, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I make a motion to approve, eight fifty four, football. Sorry. Seven fifty six. Oh, sorry. I make a motion to approve, seven fifty six Federal Road, Z dash twenty four dash fifty five. Hill K K for E C B Realty, LLC twenty four gray's plant, progress clean street and ethyl, site plan modification, instructing. Seven fifty six Federal Road, Z D dress.
Did you read twenty four?
Seven fifty six Federal Road for the site plan modification of construction of an outdoor facility.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sean. Any more discussion tonight? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.
Say goodnight.
All right, that brings us back to five A, continued public carings for one hundred Pocono Road, Z dash twenty four dash forty three. This was an application brought by the town itself. I'll just reread the. So everybody's aware. Okay, so we had, we had started this last, last meeting, and this meeting, I had asked Greg Dembowski from the town to present some data. Oh, I'm sorry.
Second, second.
Okay.
Wait for those.
Waited, waited. And the script. And Tony seconded it. So all in favor of not listening to me? All opposed?
Just point forward on the agenda. There is no basis.
No, since these are brought by the the town itself, we don't have any topic. It's normal. Do I have, do I have no opposition, no extensions? So passing unanimously. So with that, I'm going to introduce Greg Dembowski from the town to present his data. We laid it to this moratorium, so that we we discuss this in deliberations we have over there. Yes, there's copies of his presentation up here on the on tape.
Check for microphone. Here's a call back.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. So I'm Greg Dembowski. Just a little bit of background on me. I was hired by the town in twenty sixteen to be a project manager, and I was hired to implement and execute the first phase of streetscape, basically the sidewalks in the general four corners area. Three years ago, the then current economic development manager resigned. That position was eliminated. Now I spent half my time working in economic development, and we'll talk about that a lot tonight, and in in project management. I'm also assigned other tasks at the pleasure of the first selectman, who is my boss. So I worked for the first selectman, whoever that may be, whatever it may be, and I've been through three now. So with that, there is handouts. If there is not enough copies, that's as big as I can make it for you all to see it. I know we're streaming on YouTube. Call me or go to the minutes, and you can see this same package. I'm going to be as quick as I can, but on a few slides, I'm going to spend a little more time. There's eighteen slides here. The first four talk about multifamily housing. And just as a note, I'm going back to January first of twenty sixteen. So all the information you're going to see starts January first, twenty sixteen. And the reason I picked that date when I started this study twenty months ago, and it's been presented and it's updated every year, is because that was the first full year of our plan of conservation and development. That's why, that's why I picked that date. On page five, I'm going to talk about non residential development and its relationship to housing development. I'm going to talk about personal property and real estate grand list assessments as it relates to economic development. Then we're going to get into some charts. I'm going to show you a chart on page seven that shows multifamily housing. Well, it's a data set that has all multifamily housing that are in the charts above, and then I graph it, and I compare it to population, school enrollment, senior center clients, these social service clients, sewer flow, police calls, bribery M S calls. And then I'll have a couple pages on police calls for our top twenty five assessed properties and police calls to all the new multifamily housing developed since January first, twenty sixteen. I'm going to talk a little bit about definitions on correlations and causality, and I have some closing comments. So here we go. Okay, how do I do this? Ooh, I'm off to a good start. Okay, this is a chart showing all of the housing built and occupied by bedroom since twenty sixteen through twenty twenty three. I won't go through the names. You can read them. There's the zones they're in. There's the total number of housing units, and there it explains if it's studio, one bedroom, two bedroom, or three bedroom. You can see some of those zones are the T C D. Surprisingly to me, one of them is a residential zone, and a couple are in C twos. In total, remember this number, because it's going to come up a few times, three hundred eighty five apartments, multifamily apartments, have been built and are now occupied by since January first of twenty sixteen. I'm going to keep going unless someone asks a question. Kurt, is that good?
How many more do you have to check? No, we can't get questions. We'll go for questions.
All right, so I'll take questions from the commission, I guess, right, Kurt?
After his, so for the commission members and the audience members, write down your questions. So there will be questions of clarification after he does his presentation.
Next page. Again, I want to go quick, because I know. The next page now is the same, same information, but it's broken down by type of housing. So those are the same units. They're either market rate, incentive housing, or affordable housing. And that's the actual date that C E O was issued. So that's the same three hundred eighty five units on the top of that chart, but below that, there were another sixty one housing units built that aren't considered multifamily. They're either single family homes, or they were a greenway crossing. Oddly enough, not oddly enough, there are still single family homes being being built every year in this town, and you can look at those numbers below by year, anywhere from six or eight to a lot, about eleven or so. Next page. This is multifamily development under construction. So there they are. Where's that? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. That's their address. That's their zone. They're for the most part, well, no, their market rate. They're all rent occupied. Some are incentive, and some are eight thirty G affordable. There they are by bedrooms, number of bedrooms, and that's the estimated opening. I will take personal responsibility for those dates. They're my best guesses, and it changes. Developers change the rate at which they finish projects, and for various reasons. Supply chain issues. They can slow down their process for whatever reason. But that's it. And again, I want to talk, this is data. This is not any interpretation. It's not personal opinion. This is data for the applications as approved. The next page. This is multifamily plan development. These are projects. Let me start with the footnotes on the bottom. This assumes sewer capacity is available if they're not currently permitted, and also assumes permit extensions granted upon request if these projects don't start before their permits expire. So those are two assumptions or notes on these projects. So there are one, two, three, four, five, six that are, some are fully approved, some don't have all their approvals, some have some permits that have expired. But there they are by address, by zone, what category, they're affordable, their market rate, some are owner occupied, some are rent occupied, and then there are by number of bedroom. I'm going to go with the next page. Anyone still awake? Page five. This is the top. Where is this? Oh, this is, this is since twenty sixteen. Let me start with the footnote on the bottom. These are all, what is not here are what's considered commercial tenant cleanup, an existed building that gets renovated or upgraded. So what's here is the list, and I might be missing a couple, to be honest with you. And what's here is the list of all non residential, I'll call it major, construction projects since twenty sixteen, and then they're listed by address. And I want to read through the list, and that includes some that are going to be opening in twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five. Next page. This is the, there's two lists here. The top one is real estate assessed properties. These are the top twenty five in twenty twenty three real estate assessed properties. Raymore Flanagan at fourteen Candy Lake Road is the biggest at twenty one million dollars. Number twenty five is B D Federal at three seventeen Federal. The total of the top twenty five real estate assessed properties have a value, assessed value, at a hundred and eighty seven million dollars. They pay the same yield rate we all do in this town. They pay the same mill rate we all do in this town. Townwide in 2023, the real estate assessed value was two point, just under two point five billion. So seven point six percent of all real estate taxes collected come from the top twenty-five companies in that order. Look, look at the right-hand column. Look at the ones built since 2016. The Big Y came into Raymore Flanagan. We all know that was supposed to be Amazon Fresh. They put a lot of money in. Uh, Branson, the Linden, Barnbeck, and I have a mistake on this chart. I don't know if anybody caught it. Chick-fil-A actually opened in 2014. So that's a 2019 number that is an error and I apologize. I'll correct that. And then twenty twenty-four dollar general opened. Let's talk about personal property. It's the same mill rate as person, of real estate property. There are, there's a list of top twenty-five again, but also I pointed out here are the, one, two, three, four, five. Is that eight or nine that are on the top twenty-five list built since 2016? So prior to 2016, nine companies did exist. Now they're on our top twenty-five real estate list. Um, now Farm Co. was a renovation, Amazon Fresh, which is now Big Y, Branson, the Linden, Maggie's Breast Connect, Breast Imaging, Brom Tech renovation, Golf Ranch, which was Golf Quest, um, and Duncan. Um, the total from above is seventeen million dollars on just personal property. The total town is a hundred and eighty-four million. So nine point five percent of all personal property collect, personal property tax collected are from companies built and operated since 2016. Next slide. Now, now we're going to have some fun. Not that we're not having fun already, right? So this is data. This is just a data set. This data shows housing in two different groups. The C, the TCD in both gateway zones. And this information comes from the land use file. The reason I, uh, the reason I loved housing since 2016 in that column is those are the three zones. This application is recommended to be approved. But there's other zones that have multifamily housing. C one, C two, and evidently a residential zone back when they built, um, um, uh, Oak Meadows. Anyways, all of those are loved in that second column. Then I have in graph two is a population in this town as reported by the Connecticut Department of Public Health, which is considered the official population, place to go for population data and much other demographic information. Page three is school, I'm sorry. Graph three is going to be a school enrollment in 2016 through the forecast by Dr. Morell from 2026. I will mention that that's going to be updated officially sent to the state, I believe, Department of Education. Every October, the official enrollments for the year, um, get updated. But this is information as of last week here in September. The next slide, we're going to do, we're going to compare housing to, it's not seat per center client, it's social service clients. That, that page is mislabeled, but we're going to get to that. The fifth, uh, slide is going to look at our sewer flow, actual sewer flow compared to housing. Uh, uh, number six is going to, um, report and show police calls. And the last slide is going to be fire EMS calls as reported by the dispatcher's office. Okay, so enough data. Let's look at some graphs. Okay. All of that data that I've been talking about is here. The blue lines are cumulative multifamily housing since January first of 2016 in the TCD in both gateways. So in 2016, there were tenish or so. In 2017, some more got built. So we were about, I don't know, twenty-five, fifty. Go back, look at the data. Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, no multifamily housing in the TCD. And then up in twenty-three, uh, twenty-two and twenty-three, there was a little jump up. Twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. Wow. Big increases. And those are all in those graphs, those pages I had before. The other color, what color is that? Is that orange? Um, that is all other zones that have built and we have occupied multifamily housing. Twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, just under a hundred. Again, cumulative. Twenty eighteen, it jumped up in total to over two hundred. It stayed flat through 2021. Where it jumped up to, uh, around just under three hundred and it's staying flat through 2026 where it's going to jump up to just under four hundred. Remember I said, remember that number three hundred and eighty-five? If you look at 2023 and add up those two bars, those two graphs, there is your three eighty-five. Now, again, in 2026, that three eighty-five is going to go to, uh, whatever that is, uh, four hundred plus maybe four and a quarter. I think it's four fifty-four to be exact. So there's going to be a big increase on projects already approved between now and 2026, 2026. Okay, now a couple of comments. As I said, this data is cumulative. I've defined for these slides, the word multifamily to mean a building that has three or more housing units in it. I talked about this application being the blue, the blue bar, which is TCD in both gateway zones. But other zones are C, that do, that approve multifamily housing are C one and C two. And apparently Oak Meadows, which is an R eighty, um, is, is considered by this definition, multifamily and this information. I talked about the three eighty-five number. Um, I talked about that most of them being in other zones prior to 2021. But then the TCD really increases in numbers. Um, um, oh, in another, oh, who did that? Oh, I did. Um, just a side note, there are three hundred five, six thousand five hundred eighty-four housing units in town. That information is a little old. I talked about where the data comes from. Multifamily housing in 2024 now represents nine percent of total housing in Brookfield. Now. What does all this mean and why do we go back to 2016? If you go to page seventy-five on the PCD and I quote, this is from night 2016. This was written in 2015, issued in 2016. Housing studies conducted by forward planning projected new housing demand through 2028, just under twelve hundred units. Using a modest growth scenario. They said that eight years ago, nine years ago. Needed for empty nesters and millennials looking for affordability rentals and convenient commutes. That became the, um, um, revitalization plan of the TCD. That was the number one objective in the DOCD ten years ago. So I was hired to start those streetscape projects. There were zoning regulations. There were a lot of things done over those years to get what we have today. Um, so that's just a little bit of, of that perspective. Next chart. Now we're going to start comparing. So for the next six charts, you're going to see the same bars. Now we're going to start putting some data against it. So here we go. Population. This is the population, the official population for Brookfield. By the way, I have to tell you, myself and other planners in the region, um, feel, feel that the actual numbers are different than this, duh. Uh, but this is what's published and this is what statistics are based on and how decisions are made about grant applicability and other things we do. It's all this data. Uh, it's calculated July first of each year and released October of the following year. There's a lag. So we're going to see 2024 in next month from July of last year. Now, I go, I attend webinars by the Census Bureau. And PhD mathematicians present data, all demographic data. It'll put you to sleep. But if you can get through it, these are the things they talk about. Population estimates are considered post-censusal. Estimates as they are estimated due to most recent census counts, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It's basically a mathematical model until there's the census every ten years. Now, I argue that that census in 2020 isn't very accurate because of COVID. But that's just not us. That's pretty much across the board. And by the way, the methodology used by these PhD mathematicians is updated and changed over time. Okay, um, so that's population. Um, school enrollment. Wow. Same bars, actual school enrollment. The peak year was nineteen seventy-seven, three thousand one hundred and seventy-seven students. Today, we're at about twenty-five hundred. And by the best estimates available, that will continue to decline even with those housing units coming in. This is their numbers that will be updated in October. So here you have increasing multifamily housing and decreasing, um, school enrollment. What does that mean? We're going to talk about that in a few minutes. Uh, social service clients. This is reported by our director of the senior center. Um, and there's the line. I'm saying bars. How, what, what is a social service client? It is those individuals needing food pantry assistance, insurance, and other, um, needs. It is not one-off people that come in to ask a question. It's the people who are there, uh, I'll say, regularly and are regular participants in the system. Their data's in the system and they're, um, a regular client. Residents of all ages are eligible, income is very high program, and many have up to two hundred percent of the state poverty level as their, as their income. Note, you're going to hear this many times, well, at least several more. Decreases of client activity households during COVID. Even though they were extremely busy, many clients didn't come in. Right? We had all that remoteness about us. Um, and the applicant, applications, the paperwork continued, but there weren't many system people as many in the system. So my argument is that that line really kept growing from twenty nineteen on. It never really flattened. But again, I'm just talking data. I'm not interpreting anything. This is the data that's available. And this is the data presentation and I will get to opinions at the end. Graph five. This is sewer flow. Uh, this is the actual sewer flow, the average daily sewer flow by year and the estimate for 2024. Improvements in system management, like minimizing infiltration from stormwater and up and more accurate metering has kept the sewer flow relatively flat despite all this housing growth. Other factors that impact sewer are rainfall intensity and frequency. I go to several WPC meetings a year talking about these kind of things. And I, I find them to be extremely professional and thorough and good. They've managed the system very well. Their total capacity has, uh, was increased by two hundred thousand gallons earlier this year. Uh, they still have to do capital upgrades at three pump stations so that all that future flow can be pumped out. So they have work to do even to transfer or pump out that five hundred and eighty thousand gallon number. That's their total capacity today. Ninety percent of that number is five thou, uh, fif, five, what did I say? Five hundred twenty-two thousand. The reason that number is important is that ninety percent, they have to, I don't know if they have to do it officially, but they have to start making plans for more capacity. And for that reason, when they get to five twenty-two on a three-month holding average, they're going to reinstitute a moratorium. The last three months, they've been at three forty-three. They're anticipating based off those growth graphs that I showed you, another hundred and thirty-six. So their future flow is four seventy-nine. That means they're forty-two thousand gallons away from reinstituting the moratorium. A couple of months ago, that number was sixty thousand. Okay. They've also changed how they determine how much to allot in a permit. Um, they reduce the calc, they, they changed the calculation so that when someone comes for a permit for housing, uh, not as much sewer capacity is, is put in reserve or in that permit application. Please ask the WPC for more detail because that's, I'll, I'll stop there. I'm not an expert on WPCA matters. The next graph, police calls. That's the actual police call data from the dispatcher. In 2016, it was just under twenty thousand and it dropped pretty consistently to a low of around, um, how are we doing there? Twelve thousand or so, and it's really jumped up really since twenty-three. That's their estimate for the end of 2024. Why the decline? Lack of officer self-initiated activity after some protests around the country. The Police Accountability Act in 2020, vacancies and COVID. So, um, that's the information on from a police dispatcher. Next slide. Okay. And graph seven. This is fire EMS CAD calls. CAD calls are the calls that come in through the dispatcher. There's the actual data. Now, fire EMS also report incidents in other systems, uh, INFRS and ChemStar. Uh, for example, for the period by that data in INFRS, the data they reported in their systems was seven hundred and five fire EMS calls in multi-development housing. Some built prior to 2016, most notably Royalville Apartments, out of the total townwide of forty-three eighty-nine. To really understand the differences in the three systems and what's in one and what's not in another and why they're not exactly the same, um, you should review the hundred and eighty-nine page EMS, uh, report, impact report that they did and was out last year. And that talks about a lot of information like type of call, service level, address, and a lot of demographics. Um, it'll explain the differences in those, those three systems. Okay, that's enough of the graphs. How am I doing, Dan? Oh, sweet. So this is, remember before I showed you the top twenty-five real estate assessed properties? These are the same properties and these are the police calls that have come in to each of those twenty-five addresses since 2016. So I, so go to the bottom if you will on 2016. There's the twenty thousand calls we talked about. The list above has twenty-five hundred calls. So twelve percent of all police calls have gone to the top twenty-five businesses. You can look across that graph and you can see that on average, it's been between ten and twelve percent of all calls to our top twenty-five assessed businesses. And it's not always the same business. There's huge differences here. Again, I'm just presenting information. Next page. Okay, police calls by multifamily housing units built since 2016. These are the same units I talked about in previous graphs and charts. And this is the number of police calls to those addresses, um, since 2016. Obviously in 2016, almost none of them were built, so only point one percent. In 2016, but as time went on, units, more and more units built. Um, in 2023, it was two point five percent of all police calls, which were only twelve thousand. And in 2024, um, Chief Begleasy is estimating seventeen thousand total police calls and one point six percent of them will be to these, uh, businesses. Any questions? There we are. Okay, uh, I'm one page away from summarizing. You doing good, Kurt? Okay, but before I get to my summaries, I want to talk about a couple of definitions because I use these words on the next slide. What is a correlation? A correlation is a statistical measure that expresses the extent to which two variables are related. Well, how much data, how much data do you need to have a correlation that's meaningful, statistically meaningful? You go to Google and it'll tell you thirty data points. What does a percentage mean? So what we did is we went to Excel. You can plug in the correlation formula in Excel and it'll give you a, a number. If you have one or a hundred percent, that means there's a full correlation. If you have around seventy-five percent, it's good. Fifty percent's moderate. Zero, there's no correlation. And you can actually have a negative number. It's reverse or reverse correlation. So not having third, a data, not having thirty data points didn't stop us. We ran the model. So what does it say? Again, I'm going to make the point clear. This is not statistically significant, but I kind of think it gives you an idea because we've only gone back ten years. But I see twenty years, I'll have thirty years of data. So the highest correlation we found, ninety percent, was multifamily housing compared to social service clients. Remember both graphs went up pretty much the same. At sixty-four percent, which is moderate to good, was population, total town population versus fire EMS and CAD calls. At sixty-two percent was total housing since 2016 compared to, um, I'm sorry, did I say that wrong? So you, you can read that. I don't need to read it. The big news, and it's not big news because I showed you on the graph, there's a re. The big news, and it's not big news, because I showed you on the graph, there's a reverse correlation to, to school enrollment. Housing's going up, school enrollment's going down, that's a reverse correlation. What is a causality? A causality is when an event or a variable in the result, is the result of another, also known as a cause and effect relationship. These are much more difficult to prove, the correlations, and it requires experimentation with variables, it's a controlled experiment. So, I'm gonna go to my last slide if I can, and I'm gonna use those words and others. So, you know, I know I had to close this presentation, and I started by about five or six closing comments. I'm now at twelve, and I could probably fill up another page, but I'm gonna stop at twelve. The first one is, there's not enough data to show statistical meaningful significance in correlation. We still haven't enough data. I've got what we've done, we can go get more, and I'm happy to do that, um, but we don't have statistically meaningful data on correlation. There are many variables, um, in play, but we can't establish a cause and effect without more work. Variables include COVID, change of regulations, change of leadership on boards and commissions, and in the first electors office, two moratoriums, sewer and affordable housing moratorium, and many others. So without a lot more work and some controlled experimentation, I'm not sure we're ever gonna have a perfect set of, of cause and effect. Third, multifamily housing growth shifted from the other zones prior to twenty twenty-four and is really going to jump up in the TCD starting in twenty twenty-four. I showed that on the graph. Number four, sixty percent of all housing units are studios or one bedrooms, and that's almost consistently throughout the eleven years that this data shows. With the exception of two assisted living facilities, we know where those are in town, um, multifamily housing occupancy is nearly a hundred percent. Units aren't even open yet, they're taking applications. Fewer school age, school age students and a growing population as a result of an older demographic. Brookfield's average age increased from forty si, forty-five to forty-seven year old, forty-seven years old from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and twenty-four. Our town is on average, median average, not, not, not a, a mean average, by two years in four years. And we're getting older at a faster rate than the average for the rest of the state. Uh, what number was that? Oh, my, somebody's really bored. Um, uh, that was, that was, uh, okay, that was six. Okay, sorry, I'm. Seven. Seventy-five percent of, of units built before twenty twenty-four were market rate. A higher percentage of affordable, and affordable is a word you have to really define, um, afterwards. That affordable is, is mostly incentive housing, but some eighty, eight thirty G, eight thirty G is being built because they were approved before the moratorium. The two incentive districts, and maybe Kurt can tell me what those mean, I don't remember, were eliminated in twenty twenty-one. Number eight, some, I don't think most, some non-residential development came as a direct result of housing unit growth rate. I will tell you with a high degree of confidence that the food emporium would not be here or not be opening if we didn't have more housing in our downtown area. I can say that with a high degree of confidence. And there's probably others. And it's not just Brookfield, look around every town. Um, we happened to have a downtown in twenty, prior to twenty sixteen, when the bypass went in, in two thousand and nine, it really was underinvested, and there was a lot of shuttered businesses. Some were wishing they could sell, nobody could buy them. That's why we had this, they called the revitalization plan. Um, number nine, residential and non-residential development has increased the grandest values rather significantly, and the operating revenue for permit and inspection fees across many departments in town. More money came in on the grand list, and more money has come in and will come in for permits and inspection fees. Except for the COVID years, demand for municipal services has generally increased. My last two points, and these are my opinions. The WPCA will likely approve discharged permits that will take it to ninety percent of its capacity of five hundred and eighty thousand gallons within the next couple of years. This will result in the reinstatement of their moratorium. Some of their approvals are for projects that won't be built until after twenty twenty-six. My opinion. Number twelve, there are currently two large international companies considering moving to Brookfield. They would build up, they would build from the ground up, they are not here now, in fact, they're nowhere, I don't even think in the northeast. They would bring hundreds, and we're, we're working with them actively, I will tell you. They would bring hundreds of new office and manufacturing, assembly jobs, some are very highly paid positions. Do we have a workforce and people to support those companies? And we're not the only site they're looking at. In my opinion, it would be ideal if we reserved some sewer capacity for non-resi, residential development for that reason. That is the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Greg. Very fun, Greg. At this point, I'll ask any questions or clarification from the commission. Uh, I know there's a lot of data, and, uh, but if you were jotting anything down while you were listening?
I did. I had one question, but it needs to be answered now.
On your page four?
Oh.
Were, you were talking about multifamily planning development, constructions that haven't been started, or you called out the?
Let me get there, hang on please. I guess you can scroll it out, but that would be way too easy. Page four. Okay?
So in this, it's an already, projects that haven't been set, but they've been approved. Do you have dates when they were approved?
I do. Uh, I don't have them here. We have, we have to go through the land, of course, we have to go through the land use files. Well, if you say approval, there's WPCA, I'm sorry, there's wetlands, zoning, ZBA, planning, and WPCA. So there's a lot of permits we're talking about, not any one. Are you talking zoning?
I'm talking zoning, or what we can actually kick off to where they could actually start going. I think you have, you've got two candidates on there, as far as the sewer, which is definitely tied into you.
Well, you wanna do all three real quick? Or not?
I, I just want, yeah.
Okay, all right, yes, we can do that.
Okay. Yeah, I, I was just curious.
You can't, can't wait for now? Okay. Anything else?
Thank you, Greg. Um, I, I'm sorry, on page one, uh, and as you spoke about it several times, the three hundred and eighty-five number, that's occupied or not completely occupied?
Occupied. So the Linden, for example, I show sixty units occupied by the end of twenty twenty-three. The fact is, they have a building, they have approval, and they have units that are over that, way over that. Again, I'm showing occupied. And the Linden is the only example on this page where it's not fully occupied.
Thank you.
Greg, towards the end, you mentioned two large companies thinking of coming here, there's nothing definite, yeah, obviously. When do you think we would have a better idea if they're going to set their sights on Brookfield, or if they're gonna be looking elsewhere? When do you think we'd have a better idea? I know it's hard to predict with a lot of factors, but do you have any idea, idea right now?
I can tell you, we've been talking with one of them actively now for two months. They've asked for a letter of support from me and from First Life and Dunn. They will get my letter by the end of next week. Steve's back on vacation on the twenty-third. But then, without talking too much about this, some of them have some or most of their permits, some may require to come to land use for additional permits, but what I like about it is, I think there are, to me, they're no brainers. Uh, they're not gonna bring, they're not, they're gonna bring high-paying jobs, they're not gonna take a lot of sewer, um, and, um, they're the kind of jobs I think they want in Brookfield. So Matt, to answer your question directly, I don't know. One is closer than the other, both require a huge investment, a huge investment. Um, and we are at least one of two towns here in this area that are under consideration. So I don't think it's, honestly, I don't think it's quick, because we're talking, we're talking many tens of millions of dollars to invest. I can't give you a date, I, I don't wanna mend the record with one, because it's way too early.
Any other commissioners? And before we open up to, uh, the audience, I just wanted to have my, uh, vice chair read a letter from Steve Dunn to the record.
Uh, this is a letter from Steve Dunn to the zoning commission. Dear zoning commission, I would like to enter this into the record for your reading, and if allowed, have it read during public time. Following up to the discussion I had with Curtis since last inning we were having a subject, I wanna put in writing my support of the implementation of the freeze on all new multifamily housing until such time as the new POCD has been created and the combined planning zone and, um, POCD holds heavy opportunity to study and implement any needs and zoning changes that conform with the POCD. The current POCD, written almost ten years ago, was and is incredibly robust and detailed plan for our town. In particular, discussion plan for federal road, order, and specifically the four corners town center area was very well thought out and weighed out in development plan that I think is most residents in Brookfield would support. However, when I look at what actually is happening and what's being built, there seems to be a disconnect between what the POCD calls for and what is actually being built. I support a downtown that is keeping with what rural New England towns would look like. What I see now is a mass of apartment complexes that have very little in common with the rural New England town or village. We need to go back to the drawing board and allow the planning board to complete a new POCD, and then have the zoning board implement changes to keep Brookfield the way our residents would like to see it in, in place. In development of our four corners, Brookfield is unique in the, the opportunity to build a whole new downtown. What we do now will be in place for the next ten years, for next hundred years. There is zoning board to implement the moratorium on multifamily housing to allow our town to make sure that we do exactly what that, that's, best regards to Steve.
Okay, thank you. Um, now I'll ask if anybody's got questions of clarification from the audience. Sir? Yeah, will you, uh, come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and turn on the mic?
Uh, Will Mako, fifty-eight Tower Road. Just point of clarification, right? Uh, on the current POCD that's in effect, I think you said it called for twelve hundred housing units to be built over that period of the POCD?
You did use the word called for, it said there will be, be a demand for.
Demand for.
Yes.
And so where we stand today is roughly eight hundred against that twelve?
As we stand today, we're three eighty-five. By, by the end of twenty twenty-six, we'll be at, I think, eight, um, eight fifty-four, I believe is the number. You add, add the last two columns in twenty twenty-six.
So we're only two-thirds of the way through what the plan was called for.
Ten years ago, that's, if you compare those two numbers, that's right.
Okay. Um, and secondly, big worry people had with all this development was this impact on schools and school budget, that in fact is not true in one absolute other way.
Well, I, I, I'm not speaking of budget, I'm just speaking of enrollment.
I know, I, I understand. People are worried about enrollment, and therefore they have financial implications of that, and that hasn't come to be an issue in that regard.
I, I can't speak about it.
Just, yeah, just make it clear. No, just asking for, yeah. That's exactly.
My name's Michael Cubria, I'm at eight one twenty-eight Heatherwood Drive. So it warmed my heart frankly to read what Dunn said in that letter, because, um, I wanted to, so you can?
I have a question to clarify.
I'm, you know, I'm gonna ask my question. I just wanna know when, when the decision was made at some point for Brookfield to go from the town of Brookfield to the city of Brookfield. That's what I'd like to know, because I didn't see it anywhere, and, I mean, not that I'm on top of what you guys are doing, or in all the years I've lived here. You talk about the senior housings and three hundred and eighty-five that the elderly asked about.
Well, let me answer your question. So the question is, how do we get?
Yeah, how did, how did?
The process is that every ten years, our plan of conservation and development, the POCD, is updated, and from that, the zoning regs are changed to, to, um, effect our goals, goals and visions in that POCD. So, um, those zoning regs then are used by developers, and if it make, if it match, if it meets the regulations, then it can't be turned down. We can, we can adjust, we can guide it, we can ask for changes, but we can't turn it down if it meets all the requirements of the regulations. Uh, so that's how things happen. Now, that's why we're doing this moratorium, to give a pause, to see how well did both the POCD and the resultant zoning regs work out? And so that's why we wanted to do a course correction, and that's, that's how it happens.
The other thing too is that, and I said this at the last meeting, um, simply put, we try to plan for the future. Um, as you know, ten years ago, it looks a lot different than we, than we thought it was going to look ten years ago. At the same time, one thing that does not change is that if an application meets the zoning regs that are in place at a given time, it's going to be approved. If an application does not meet the zoning regs at a given time, it's going to be denied to the extent that this commission, or in the future, the PMZ commission can work with an applicant and create some stipulations. We try to go ahead and do that. Um, but then we're also faced, you take Federal Road, you go from where Silver Mine is all the way up to the Milford border, and as our land use staff will tell you and anyone who's been on a commission, you have a hodgepodge of, uh, pre-existing non-conforming properties that you have to work around. Now, one thing that zoning can't do is write a regulation based on what thinks might come here. That spot zoning, it'd never stand up in court if it did. So we're using this moratorium as a tool to maybe, uh, help us as we, as we get through the next ten years, and as the next two years, as the POCD comes and is developed.
So for clarity on my end, what you're basically saying, it sounds like to me, is that as long as that, as long as the proposal goes with what is allowed, doesn't matter if we're standing here and asking questions of what the people would prefer rather, so long as the proposal is what, that's what we're.
Uh, what the, the part you don't, uh, you're missing is that when we do the zoning regs, that's when the town has a say in whether they like them or not. So back ten years ago, when the regulations for the TCD were made, the public was invited in to comment and help guide them. So ten years ago, that, that's the process. So this, we're doing it again. Now we're doing the moratorium to ask comments from the public, like you, uh, about this moratorium, and then when we finish the POCD, which will have a lot of outreach from the planning commission to the public, to say, how, what vision do you want? That would also be public input to say, this is how we want it to look, and this is what we don't like what happened. And then that will filter down, and then there's a second chance, the second bite of the apple, when the actual regs are changed, uh, based on that new POCD. And so now the public again gets to say, yes, we like that, no, we don't like that.
Kurt, can I, can I? Last question. Right? Sorry, can I add a couple of points of clarification? So the town doesn't own Federal Road or Route twenty-five, there's three state roads. We can do nothing on a state road without their approval. I will tell you that when we designed Street State Phase One, it's not what's out there today, it's what they approved. We wanted slant parking, give that New England look, they said no. So my first point is the town doesn't own Federal Road. Any work we do, they have to approve the design, first point. Second point, if you go back to the twenty twelve housing study, I think that was done, and you look at what it talked about for envisioning our downtown, it didn't show four gas stations. It showed something else. The fact of the matter is the town owns zero property in the TCD. So unless somebody sold, the town bought it, we can't change what's there. Uh, there was talks about moving a, um, a post office, build a library in the downtown, we own zero, the town owns zero property. So, there's another thing.
So these units that you're talking about, that are housing, um, senior housing, how many more of these larger units are gonna be senior housing?
So that's on page, it's on one of those pages?
I didn't have the booklet.
If you, if you want to take that, I can go through it now, or you can take a copy or come see me, I'll go through the slides again.
Sure, okay.
What page is it on? If I could just one last comment, the word senior housing and the word affordable housing are general terms. You really have to understand what affordable, when you say affordable, what do you mean? Is it eight thirty G affordable, or is it incentive housing by what was current in our rates back then? So affordability is like, your cars are expensive, yeah, what do you mean? So afford, you have to define what affordable is.
Okay, Gillian Doherty, forty-nine Hutterbrook Road. And what you just said is my first point of clarification. So most of the upcoming housing, multifamily housing units that have been approved and will be built are incentive housing, I believe.
We're gonna pull that up.
I think there were two that were, that said affordable. So I was wondering what the difference was between affordable and incentive. And then my second question had to do, and I think I heard you say it, the apartment buildings on Laurel Hill, were they built prior to twenty sixteen?
Yes, twenty fifteen.
Okay, I do remember. So that answers that question. And I'll sit down.
And a clarification on Laurel Hill, I think it's very important because those were prior to twenty sixteen, but what happened with those was, they came through this commission, and a certain percentage of the units were classified as affordable. After they were approved locally, they went for federal financing to Department of Housing and Urban Development, and in getting that federal financing, they made all of the units affordable. So they had the same building footprints, but they wanted to work many more units than they had said of the commission. One thing this commission cannot do is ask an applicant how they're going to finance their product, and we were a little bit sandbagged on Laurel Hill.
Yeah, and generally, when you see incentive and affordable, aside from Laurel Hill apartments, just a portion are incentive, like twenty percent to thirty percent, and the rest are market rate.
Twenty-six percent.
Hi, six hundred and seventeen of Meadows Drive. I'm just curious as to where the two international companies were thinking of building?
They haven't settled on a site. Brookfield is one of the towns they're looking at, and they haven't logged anything, I don't, they'd rather, they, they, nothing's been decided, and they asked that we just work with them, they haven't decided. So there's been no decisions, no approvals, it's all conceptual, they're searching.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Joe Sand George, I reside at six Hollow Drive in Brookfield. My one question is that we're sort of fast approaching our sewer capacity, and as you want to keep a certain amount of reserve for economic development. When we do exceed our sewer capacity, what considerations there for the amount of money it would cost for infrastructure for? Is it something that we address in terms of dollars to understand what it would mean to us economically?
That's, that's the purview of the sewer commission. So those are the things, I guess if you wanna fall asleep at night to go to their meeting or watch them, or go to their meeting to ask.
Do we take that information into consideration for the moratorium?
We are taking that into consideration for our moratorium, our multifamily development, that sewer, we don't want to outpace sewer capacity, and we want to pause and, you know, assess that, EMS, and, you know, all the other reasons. The sewer commission has their own, you know, calculations they have to do, and the last time Nelson Mal was chairman of the sewer commission was here, he did talk about how they have to, you mentioned, Greg mentioned that they're ninety percent, they have to think about how we would build more sewer capacity and what that would look like.
Well, any decision making tonight affect the decision on moratorium in regards to that?
No, except that if we decide to approve a moratorium, then, and we will, you know, the multifamily development tends to use more sewer capacity than other sorts of commercial developments. So the hope is that it would, for now, stop that while we look at, you know, stop the development and the use of that sewer capacity, because if we hit our sewer moratorium, it doesn't matter if we have one or not, because all commercial development is stopped.
Just one other question, it's a quick question on real estate assessed value, in which you had mentioned that the top twenty five, lately, classes are not working for me, I think the top twenty-five businesses here in Brookfield represent about seven point eight percent of the assessed value in town. Can you tell me if the commercial real estate, we went to a major reassessment here in town less than two years ago, residential, pretty fair amount. But I know that commercial did go up in a reassessed value, do you happen to know if it did?
You wanna answer that, Kurt?
I have no idea. That's the assessor's office.
Yes, there we go. If you look on here, some of these top twenty-five are real estate, are multifamily housing. So this, this top twenty-five is not, is not non-residential, it's all.
Oh, okay. And it's for? For a great part of climate and center are commercial, right? Yeah, so that's what's speaking about, speaking to commercial, reassessed value. And I know this is not a zoning, so.
It's important, to answer your question, sir, it's very important to keep in mind any time there's a rebound, there's a comprehensive rebound every five years in town. There are a certain number of residential properties that do come up in an assessed value, there's certain, there's some that even come down, and there's some that stay the same, and it's the same with commercial. So it's, and it's how did they just work through it?
Okay. One last very quick question is also the aesthetics of bringing in these big multifamily buildings into town, what they do to some of the existing adjacent properties? We drive through on the way back to our home, Station Road, Federal Road and Station Road, the complete backyards of these private residences have been completely bare. They're, they are, if you look up your backyard, you're looking at a three-story building directly facing the attitude. The decreased value of their properties, it must be traumatic to the owners of what's happening. There should be some, you know, I think in the beginning, the person who wrote that letter from the church said it should be harmonious with the rest of the zone. Does that apply to what's happened to many of these individual private homes?
Which is why we're looking at it now, but also Laurel Hill is actually in the T C D, so it's a commercial zone. But those are the things, those are the feedback, and, you know, all the commission members of planning and zoning will, you know, like, turn to the drive around and look to see what's happening.
Exactly, I can raise to you as it is, not that it's your clause, but in my opinion, it's something that a real question is, the poor people and private values, what's happening?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anybody else who'd like to ask?
Peter Foci, three green view room. My question is with regard to the fire.
Can you please spell your last name?
F O C A.
And your last name, please?
Three green view room.
Thank you.
With regard to police, fire, and assault, do you calculate what's going to be required when you approve these building sites? I've heard in some cases that, a few months ago, somebody wanted to build a seven-story building here in Brookfield, that was actually rejected because you would have to buy a hook and ladder, it's two hundred feet tall, something like that. Has new ambulances, new fire trucks of a given age been calculated into when you guys are willing for this moratorium?
Not explicitly, but, you know, we get feedback and input from the police and the fire for every application like that. And so that's why they also come here and talk, you know, and they, for example, one time they came in front of us and asked to have, ask the new multi-unit development to have stretcher elevators, so they could, you know, only the ambulance would have to come, the fire department would have to come as well, so, have to people, so that, that sort of thing. Some things we can't, you know, regulate, but we can just ask.
Would somebody go within, within the town?
Not explicitly, but as part of the process, as a follow-up.
Okay. There's, I think the Brookfield Fire Department is really not part of the town, correct? It's a separate entity?
It is, they're sep, they're separate legal entities.
Separate legal, yeah. So we have to fund them through our taxes?
They, they do fundraising, they collect monies from, and I'm not speaking as a fire department person, but generally speaking, when an ambulance goes out, I think there's, you know, so there is revenue from some of, some of what they do.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, clarification?
Oh, sure. Just to reiterate what Kurt said earlier, if an application comes in that meets the regulations for the zoning, and wetlands and so forth, we are basically obligated to accept that. And we can tweak, we can ask them to tweak certain things, but our hands are tied in that respect.
David Westville, seven J C Court. Can you guys, are we in a moratorium right now?
No.
Okay.
We, we are, we have a application to start a moratorium, and this is the public hearing part where we get feedback from the...
Who approved the application?
We own that, we brought the application ourselves.
So you're approving yourselves?
Well, we also, we approve it or we're not, I mean, we brought it.
So you guys vote the application, and you decide whether it's approved or not?
Well, we look at, we get the input, and if most people are like, we don't want it or something.
So have we ever been in a moratorium before?
A multifamily development moratorium? No, we, no we haven't. We've, we've had cannabis moratoriums, we've had affordable housing, affordable housing.
Sewer?
Yeah, yeah. But as far as the zoning commission, we've done a cannabis moratorium.
Is there a minimum amount of time for a moratorium? And how do you live the moratorium?
Well, two things, we have to decide how long it's gonna be, and then we have to see, you know, what's legal to, I mean, the state, state looks at, the state doesn't want necessarily towns to stop allowing the unit development because they think, they say we have a housing front. So we can't just say forever, we have to do something reasonable, and based on facts of why we're doing it, and have good reasons.
And how do you guys decide on whether?
Well, we ask the community development, Greg Debasky, to give us the data to support our self-position that sewer capacity, for outrunning sewer capacity, the EMS is being strained, various, like what is said in the application. Yeah, fire chiefs go last time, and a number of calls they have to go out. So this is the data we're taking in, because we, this is what we think. And at the same time, we have a Plan of Conservation and Development that's being, that had to be done every ten years, and they started it, the planning commission.
Is that in our bylaws?
That's in, that's state statute. State says they have to do that. It's a guiding document for what do you, what do you want your community to look for. And they do that, and then we change the regulations to meet their changes, and that's all based on feedback. So the planning commission is gonna go through that process for the next two years, year and a half. They have consultants, they're gonna do a lot of outreach, workshops, and surveys, and get what people want, especially down in the T C D, just like they did ten years ago. And then develop a goal, and a vision, and a new Plan of Conservation and Development. That's due March twenty twenty-six.
Okay. So when would you guys decide by whether it was moratorium or not? Do we get notified?
It'll be in the paper, there's always public notices. I'm sure it'll be as a news story as well, because, and we're glad they do this, we wanted some, we want some advertisers, so we would get people here to put their input in, so we can make a decision based on feedback and that.
And I want to make a question, are you guys at liberty to tell us what the two companies are?
Oh, well, we don't know, we're not...
You don't know? Or you're not at liberty?
Oh, he's asked.
For one of them, I don't know. I will tell you, they, in one, in one case, we do not know. We know the broker, we know the property owner, we know what they want to do generally, but even, they're not ready to tell us because of reasons that I don't even understand. So the answer is no in one case.
Do we have requirements for the, for the kind of company we would want?
You know, you can't say we want that type of...
Well, that we would allow.
Yeah, that's not allowed. It's not allowed to say we don't allow that, except for certain cases like...
The zoning, you can't put that in zoning?
Well, for example, yeah, but we, we have certain things, like we, we, we have, not a moratorium, we have a panel candidate, but like adult entertainment things. We may have to allow, but only in certain zones, and only very stringent regulations. So we can't just, you know, this is dangerous, we just can't say, oh, we don't want that in this town. But there are some things that are not allowed, just because they're not on the list of things that are allowed. We have, they call them permissive regulations, so it's not permitted.
Well, like, what about the chemical plant that's the dangerous, we can't stop that?
We have a lot of regulations to, you know, make sure they're safe and everything. So maybe it'd be so onerous and costly, we wouldn't want to, but we can't stop it, car drawn.
The, what there is, there is, zoning does have any application, whether it's in permitted use or not, with his health and safety basis, that can be denied.
I mean, I understand your questions, because you're wondering, how do we get here? Some people are, when you look at the downtown.
Right.
And some people don't, some people like it, so that's, we want the feedback, but part of our thing is, you know, we don't want to run out of sewer capacity and shut down all commercial development, both multifamily and non, you know, non multifamily.
Right, Kurt or not, we, real quick, after zoning, if they approve an application, there are many more things that have to be approved. There could be planning, there's W P C A, and then you get a building permit, you have to go through fire and health and safety, I mean, there's many things that have to get approved once it leaves their desk.
Yeah, or just one step of a long process. And it's costly.
Right. Okay. Well, thank you.
Any more questions, clarification?
My name's Cindy Juddler. I live at one Stillwater Circle in Newbury Village, and I thank you for the statistics, it's wonderful to have them. However, sometimes living the life is quite different. And where we are, there has been a remarkable increase in traffic, and as you said, those that's a stay-home road, I understand that. But if you live a building on the road, it comes directly to the road. Never in the future would there be a chance to change that road unless you remove a building. So I want to know, how is that accommodated in all of this? I don't, I think it's too late. I think they've closed themselves into that barrier, and there's no way to get around it. And, you know, like you said, these statistics are wonderful, but when you're there and you can't find the parkway space, I can't get out, getting on a Newbury Village used to be super simple, and it's not anymore. There's people wandering on the street all the time, you have to be really careful. But there's no potential to change the traffic issue.
Well, yeah, we're just doing questions, clarification, so, in, in answer to, I think your question is, that's why we're having this process. So, you know, looking at what's happened, and, you know, the moratorium will let us stop, look what's happened from the P O C D and the existing regulations, so it can guide us to changes.
I understand that, except there is no solution, because of...
Well, we don't know that, that's, that's...
I mean, overpasses maybe, and then it's, you know, then it's out of control. The other thing I've noted from what you've shared with us, is that forty-five to forty-seven is the average age in Brookfield, and the school population has gone down. Perhaps I should be looked at as well, it sounds like younger families are not moving into the community. Yes. Thank you.
Any other questions, clarification? Now I'm prepared to listen for, people are in favor of this moratorium. Actually, can you hand me the sheets? Well, there's only one name on the sheets. Okay, so nobody's written down in favor, but, so there's no opinion on the list, but does anybody want to come up and speak in favor of the application? Well, yeah...
Well, yeah, they can, I'm, yeah, I mean, I'll go through the list and then I'll ask the, uh, audience. Oh, sir? This is in favor. What did I say?
Don't misinterpret my questions, really. Uh, Will Miko fifty-eight Tower Road. I am in favor of moratorium. I think the job that's been done in the entire town center district is beautiful. I love it, but I think it's time to put it aside and make sure everything's in control. Um, so I'm in favor.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in favor of the moratorium?
Uh, Mark DeSerris, twenty-three Green Hill Drive, um, C A C D R W S. Um, P of O music. The reason I moved was exactly, um, my town there, which I grew up in, was a quarter of a year old. Um, it was a town, it was a town just like this, suburban, no traffic, and we were farming. I was living next life, you know, the last fifteen years, I started building apartment buildings, everything. Traffic went up, crime went up, taxes went up, the culture of the town disintegrated. Um, to me, I'm seeing it now because my backyard is getting that big, two hundred and twelve apartment unit. It's kinda funny that I moved here to get away from it, and I'm still being clear in my backyard. Um, I'm fine with it, you know? I understand. You keep it real. But you guys don't realize the damage it will do, ten, fifteen years, for sure. You're gonna see this town changing rapidly, okay? For everyone, and I, and I use this as a population factor. Um, so what, you have ten thousand people and the crime rate will be at two percent, right? So you can have two hundred people that create crime. If you double the population, it's gonna increase the crime naturally. So you have more people, you're gonna have more crime, we're concerned. That is a fact. It doesn't change. So you're putting the strain on the whole first responders, just like that. Now, my kids are growing up. I don't have to worry about that, with the schools are changing. And it's not about demographics, but it has to do with what Brookfield's supposed to be. I remember when I was like twelve years old, watching TV, and at that point, I lived in Queens. I remember seeing a kid, a movie, he was riding through a hole, suburban, his bikes, kids running around. I was like, that's where I wanna live. That's what I'm looking for. And I got, I got lucky enough, I would try to leave my money in the garage, and everyone here is gonna miss out on it. Their kids, right, it's a menace. This town's gonna change. It's a fact. More apartments you build, more things will happen with strength, danger charge. There's no question. And to me, as now a Brookfield resident, I love it. I love the town, the people in town. And the roads aren't bad. Okay, if you're about to do it, it's just gonna change the whole way it's perceived. And the American dream of owning a picket fence, house, and unit with kids, and family unit is going to get lost because an apartment building doesn't allow for that. There's nothing good. Show me an area that has a high density population, anywhere in the country. Show me where the kids there and the people grow up and have a great life, crime, traffic, car accidents. Everything goes on there. It's a natural use because we get people together, and you can find that, it never works out, and that's the outcome.
So you're in favor of the moratorium?
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah, I, I forgot. We're gonna do a timer for three minutes, but I think you were, just about three minutes. So, uh, they'll be keeping the timer. It was, it was mentioned in the last one, since we didn't reread the script. Thank you. Yeah, I know, different setting. We're all, oh, it's done. Um, anybody else like to speak in favor of the moratorium?
I'm in favor of moratorium.
Can you say your name again?
David, David Telesco, J.C. Court, seven years. At this point, I've been here for twenty-five years. I came to Brookfield because it was a small town, and the taxes are low. At this point, I don't see any benefit to the common Brookfield citizen for all this development. So I think a moratorium would be good so that we could assess the benefit of all the work that's been done so far.
Thank you. Anybody else who likes? Yeah, if, if, if everybody would like to speak, want us to come up into the line behind them, that would be great.
Peter Foshi, three Green Hill Road. I've been a resident of Brookfield now for thirty years. I came from Old Island, so I kinda know the ways built up over the years. Telling the truth, I don't even go downtown anymore. It's just, to me, growing out of control. And to see what's gonna happen with the new buildings that are going up north of Four Corners, as the other lady was saying, I'm thinking, there's gonna be so much traffic there and so many accidents that you're gonna be having fire and EMS, as I mentioned before, going out there making calls, you know, on a, on an hourly basis, because it's getting, from the way I see it when I go down, very congested.
Hi, Susan LeBeau, seventeen Oak Meadows Drive. I just wanna tell the gentleman over there that he said it's exactly what happens. I, with my accent, I know you could tell, um, Queens, New York. And I moved to Connecticut because at the age of forty-five, I was able to have my son, and I wanted him to grow up in an area that my town used to be like. So originally, we moved to Ridgefield, got divorced, and now I'm in Brookfield. And my town, when I grew up in White Stone, was a beautiful area. It was the best place to grow up. I wouldn't have wanted to grow up anywhere else, but over the years, my town changed, and that's why we moved to Connecticut, because it's beautiful, families, more community, and I don't want that to happen here. It's a beautiful town. I just, I'm in favor of the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Cugria, twenty-eight Heatherwood Drive. I'm in favor of the moratorium. That's why I got up before, because I thought that's what we would do it. And, um, that's why I was surprised that you told me only to ask a question, not say anything. I also agree with that gentleman, um, also transplanted in here. My wife and I moved here over a decade ago. My concern really is, I mean, listen, life is about change. There's nothing that stays the same no matter where you are. But my concern is the amount of change that I've seen in just the last two or three years. I mean, I used to go to my driveway, and maybe a car would go by, too. Like, I could go left, right, forward, nothing. Now, I look at my driveway with one, two, seven, eight, though the world from one end to another on a Sunday when I come to see my mother in Danbury, it'd take me forever, and I'm right here in Brookfield. So those are the kinds of things that I think we need to really take into consideration. I understand that there's a need, but I think that really, the town of Brookfield, as I said earlier, should make, s- keep itself as the town of Brookfield as opposed to becoming the city of Brookfield. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mark Griffin K, eighty-eight Long Meadow Road. I just want to. MC. M C, capital C, A, B, E. Eighty-eight Long Meadow Road. Um, I just wanna speak in favor of the moratorium. Um, I agree with what's been said, and the traffic has become really amazing, and I just can't imagine with more and more, you know, multiple resident buildings, and it is not the way, you know, we expect things to be in Brookfield. And I especially am concerned about the long tier buyer personnel. This is a tremendous difference to what they've signed up for in marketing, and we really owe them a tremendous debt and respect. And I don't know that this is the right way to go for them, so that's what I'm just saying.
Thank you.
Uh, Bill Perone, twenty-seven Meadowwood Road. Uh, I've been a resident for thirty-four years. Um, I'm in favor of the moratorium, and it comes from being the bottom tier buyer five in this town for all twenty years, for being on the NBC for all fifteen years, and my goal is for the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Ellen O'Donnell, five Cotton Dale Lane. In Brookfield, I am in favor of the moratorium for reasonable reasons, that it's always good to take a step back, look what we're doing. I wanna tell you that when I was a resident of New Melford, raising my family, I used to love to come up to Brookfield and go to Rickles', and go to Peters and Forbes', and go to the things in town, and then that bypass was built. People from New Melford never came to Brookfield any longer. We never went to the downtown. So I hear residents who have moved more recently, who talk about maybe they used to go to the downtown. That was years ago, and then the downtown died. And so I think it's really important that we continue to work on this downtown, that we mean a lively downtown, and part of that is development. And I think just like, I think our property taxes would be extraordinarily high if we didn't have businesses, small businesses that fit the character of our town. So I think there's a, we can't go back to Midbury or RFD, and so we have to think, so I like the caution of taking them on a moratorium, but I think our town still needs to consider development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Joe San George, six Olive Drive. Um, I'm, I'm for the moratorium. And my question is, are we gonna have a chance to sign whether we are for the moratorium?
No, no, it was just for speaking, so you're standing up. Yeah, so I start with those, because we're a couple of these public carriers. There were so many people, it was easier to do.
Okay. Also, my, my wife Karen San George, she's right here. She can disagree if she wants to. Six Olive Drive. She's in the moratorium as well. Thank you.
Is there anybody else like to speak in favor?
Mr. Chairman, can I make a couple of points of clarification?
Sure.
Okay, two, um, uh, thank you. Oh, um, as far as traffic, I've got a road, no doubt about it, but just so you know, the new grocery store is gonna be getting turning lanes of All Hill Road, and even the new developments north of Four Corners, I believe there was gonna be turning lanes into the new apartments coming in on the other side of, um, AR, what's going in at AR Builders, and they're set further back. So that's the first point regarding traffic. Turning lanes are coming in the Four Corners. Second point, someone talked about more cars everywhere. Absolutely. Uh, I'm part of the West Cobb Organization, the planning group for the region, and what they tell us, and this statistic show, is since COVID, many people who used to live in, used to work outside of Brookfield, went to New York City, White Plains, five days a week. Now they're only going a couple of days a week. So we're seeing more people who have the same jobs in town, twice as, twice as much, if you will. So, um, just those two points of clarification.
Thank you. Uh, so, seeing there's nobody else for speaking in favor, is there anybody like to speak in opposition?
Gillian Doherty, forty-nine Hopper Road. And it's not so much opposition as it is along the lines of what Ellen said. Um, that I can see from a lot of the figures that were presented this evening, and while correlation is not necessarily causation, and we don't have enough information to determine causation at this point in time, taking a step back and analyzing where we may be able to make changes is an important step. But I think it is also important to realize that what was determined in two thousand and twelve, that people might be in need of incentive housing, um, and affordable housing, and would move here because of that, and young people, and not necessarily that would add to the schools, because so far that hasn't happened. Um, but multifamily housing is a good way to do that. What we've done with downtown is a very European thing. People who can have an apartment downtown now will, when the grocery store is open, be able to walk to the grocery store and buy groceries, and then be able to walk home. They don't need a car. That's why it makes sense to put multifamily housing on federal road. That's where the bus route is. So if you don't have a car, you at least have a form of transportation. So I am in favor of a pause, but not alone, because I think we will lose sight of affordable housing and the needs of people in Brookfield if we have a long pause.
All right, thank you. Um, it's clear, a point of clarification now, that as a town attorney, but even if we have a multifamily development moratorium, if they, if we lose, if we end our eight thirty G moratorium, they could come in anyway, so. So, it, that worry goes away if someone comes in with eight thirty G after our eight thirty G moratorium. But that's still good till twenty twenty-six, I believe.
There are still many apartments that are scheduled to be built that you haven't seen yet, that have been approved.
Yeah, and, and, and I'll also clarify, this is only for the TCD and the gateway zones, north and south. Uh, there is certainly multifamily development allowed in the other two commercial districts, so that doesn't shut down there. Uh, C one and C two, which are along Federal Road, for example, Oak Meadows, so, uh, you know, that's an example of something outside the zone that is multifamily, so that there's another one going in nearby. So is there anybody else like to speak in opposition? All right, so, uh.
Motion to close the public hearing in respect to application C dash two four four three.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Matt. Second, uh, thank you, Tony. Uh, we have a motion to, uh, close this public hearing. Is there any, uh, discussion on the motion? All in favor? I oppose. No, I give this a no. All right. Uh, so this is a, we've closed the public hearing, so we can't take any more data, but we have a tremendous amount of data, and we thank everybody for coming here, and the last meeting, that went on forever, the few who stayed to the bitter end, I thank you. So, uh, after this, we go into deliberations, and, and we're going to do that next week. We just have to, now, it's just too much. We have too much to, we gotta move, because we have to. Is anybody in the table right here doing the deliberation right now, or they might look at the data?
I understand that. I think the public is interested, but we have to.
Yeah, so you can watch the next public hearing. I mean, what's up? I mean, I think, so you can watch the streaming the next time for deliberations. So for deliberations, the public is not allowed to interact or abstain, but, um, my feeling is that a lot of data that everybody's called to digest to have a more systematic deliberation, that we all get back together.
My view would require, same thing happened by some.
and we all get back together, I guess, the large pack of information, and all the equals. I don't know how the rest of the person feels about that. Right, very good. Now, continue to, to deliberate. No, no motion. All right, so, uh, the next application is, oh, yeah. Right, can we take a five-minute break? Uh, we'll reconvene at, uh, five, is that correct? Five, eight fifty-five? Get a motion? Yeah, second on that? Do you all in favor of a reset of the motion? All right, I see now. Okay, if everybody, um, quiet down, we'll reconvene immediately at eight fifty-seven. And the next application up as a continued public hearing is two oh two Candlewood Lake Road, C dash twenty-four dash thirty-eight.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Um, nice to see you all again for the record.
Motion to wait for reading of legal notice.
Ah.
Please, motion to wait for reading of legal notice.
All right. All right. All in favor? Aye. And just so, just so everybody knows, I'm sorry, before.
No.
Uh, three-minute time limit on comments, because it's another lead night, as we can see. And, um, if you've already spoken last week, please give precedence to people who haven't. So, because again, you don't want to be here till eleven. Thank you. And also, cell phones off.
I needed to play that song, because I was starting.
Oh, yes, yeah.
I did, uh, this is Commissioner Matt Grimes, I did receive a request to recuse myself on this application. Uh, the request, uh, in my opinion, did not meet the threshold for recusal, uh, so I will not be recusing myself. I have read all the materials on this, Rowan Con, and I have listened to all of the comments from Rowan Con, and I think I perfectly, at the moment, bear to be deciding this application. Thank you.
Also, to, uh, to, we got some information, uh, opinion by the town attorney, and that the, um, he was not a commissioner at the time, nor is he a member of SOCOs or VFW. So he's seen this application as fresh as, and he's bound to look at it that way with all the data that comes in.
Great, thank you. I'll, I'll start over again, just for clarity of record. Uh, good evening, everyone. My name's Andrea Gomes, I'm an attorney at Hinckley Allen, at Twenty Church Street in Hartford, uh, here on behalf of the applicants. Uh, with me tonight as part of the applicant team is Marco Mastah, the SOCO president, John Kennedy, the adjutant for the Brookfield VFW, and we also have Joe Beal, commander of the Brookfield VFW. So as the commission knows, we're here for the continued public hearing, for reasonable accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act, for additional parking signage and lighting on-site. Uh, I will not be rehashing what we discussed at length at the last public hearing. I'm going to be focusing primarily on the new materials that the commission has on the record since the August public hearing. Uh, I will likely be going a bit out of order, I promise, I hope it makes sense as to why I'm doing that. Um, after I conclude, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask, uh, Mr. O'Master and Mr. Beal have some very short comments that they'll be adding in. Uh, of course, it's up to the commission, but at some point, uh, I think it makes sense to go to public comment, and then I have some closing comments, presuming that we're ready to close the public hearing, which I believe, I hope we are. So on September fifth, the commission should have received a tabbed, uh, package of supplemental materials from the applicants. I'm just going to run through some of the materials that were included in that package, um, all of which was really in response to commission and public comments and questions. So one of the items that the commission received, it was that tab two of that package, was a revised lighting plan, a revised photometric plan, uh, eliminating any light trespass beyond the southerly property line, which is a property line that abuts Mr. Vissirka's property. The commission may recall, the light trespass in the original plan was really de minimis, but we went back to our lighting vendor and ensured that we have zero all along that southerly property line to address that. Uh, there was also a question from one of the commissioners, I don't know if it was Commissioner Fontana, about the possibility of adding in motion sensors, uh, and timers to really, uh, limit the amount of time that the lights are on. Uh, we have agreed, and I'll be getting to our proposed conditions of approval in a little bit, but in our September fifth package, we made clear to the commission that we are agreeing to put these lights on, uh, the parking lot lights on a motion sensor, so that they'll only come on when someone's on site and the lighting is actually needed for safe site circulation. And we are also willing to put the lighting, uh, on timers, so that the lighting, uh, will be limited to those hours that people could be on-site. Uh, to be clear, the club has operated and will continue to operate between the hours of eight AM and ten PM, but we're suggesting as a proposed condition that the parking lot lighting timers be limited to seven AM to eleven PM. In those instances, that there are some events or meetings, either early in the morning or late in the evening, it gives people a little bit of time to, uh, clean up with that lighting, uh, given those hours are often dark, particularly in the winter. Second, uh, regarding our proposed sign, uh, in tab one of our September fifth submission, we have a bit of a narrative there. Uh, as we've explained, we've proposed the sign along Candlewood Lake Road, given that many of our members, particularly our disabled or elderly members, have had significant issues turning into the driveway in time in a safe manner. Sign would help with that, right? That's part of the purpose of the signage, just for refinding. Uh, we originally proposed a thirty-two square foot sign, uh, taking, uh, some discretion or taking some inspiration, if you will, from the Candlewood East sign. Uh, the commission at the last hearing expressed some reservation about, I believe it was you, Mr. Chair, Chairman, about the size of that sign. So what we did was we went back to Fussin' O'Neill, Commissioner will remember Mark Fortucci, because he and his colleague Gina Musinski from Fussin' O'Neill are traffic engineers, and we actually asked them to review, to review available state and federal signage standards, uh, to, regarding size of signs on, um, roadways. Uh, Ms. Musinski provided us the narrative, which we copied into our tab one memo, um, and she really was looking at the signs from the Federal Highway Administration, which has a general manual on signage. Um, I won't bore the commission with the math that she did there, because there was some math, but ultimately she suggested we reduce the sign to sixteen square feet, so, uh, cutting it, uh, in half. And, uh, we have agreed to that suggestion. So we're taking our proposed sign, we're no longer suggesting thirty-two square feet, we're going down to sixteen square feet, and the sign will include the name of the applicants in the appropriate letter suggested by the Federal Highway Administration. Uh, also at tab one, we did, uh, go back to the discussion that we had at the last public hearing regarding event rentals. Uh, there was a concern that we rented to non-members. Um, I believe we hashed that out and clarified that there are no non-member event rentals, but we wanted to take the opportunity in writing in our package, and again, tonight, to clarify that we do not allow non-members to rent our site. Only members can rent the site, they need to do so with approval from the SOCO board. And if they are renting the site and they have been approved, they are required to be on-site at all times during that event. That's the way things have been done, and that's the way they will continue to be. So stepping away from the September fifth package, I do want to turn just briefly to an email exchange that I had with the commission's attorney, Attorney Tom Beecher, uh, regarding the application. Uh, Attorney Beecher had emailed, uh, me as counsel for the applicant, asking for three things. Number one, for the building sharing agreement or lease between the applicants. Number two, our membership lists. And number three, uh, for an agreement that we place, uh, handicapped parking signs or pavement markings, designating thirty-six of the proposed forty-nine total parking spaces on-site as handicapped only. Um, the, uh, in response, and the commission should have this in the record, I confirm it was Markowski, uh, we did provide the building sharing agreement, that's been uploaded to the portal. Uh, we did express reservation or confusion in our response email to Attorney Beecher as to why that agreement was relevant, but we nevertheless provided it, and the commission will note that the VFW has a right of first refusal on the site should SOCO ever elect to sell. Uh, we respectfully declined Attorney Beecher's request for, uh, membership lists. And we did so for a couple of reasons. Um, first, both applicant organizations have policies preventing the release of its members. Uh, this really hearkens back to preventing Nazi and communist persecution for SOCO members, we're called an older, uh, an older organization. And, uh, also from, uh, protecting and maintaining the privacy of VFW members combat status. Um, but more importantly, and I think more relevantly here to this application, is the fact that, and I expressed this to Attorney Beecher on the phone when I spoke with him, our membership lists really are irrelevant to or unnecessary for this commission's review of the application under the ADA. Uh, hypothetically speaking, knowing that John Doe is a member of one or both organizations doesn't tell the commission whether he's disabled within the meaning of the ADA, whether, um, we need the other elements of the ADA test. So instead, we will again point the commission, and I will do so a couple of times tonight, to Mr. O'Master's affidavit, which we, uh, notarized affidavit, which we submitted with our original application package, which, uh, provides information on the approximate number of active members of each organization, as well as the percentage of members who are disabled at this time. Um, also, I, I mentioned this to Attorney Beecher in my email, the law is clear that, uh, an organization seeking a reasonable accommodation on behalf of its members need not prove disability of each of its members. Collective proof of the disability of the membership is sufficient, and again, we believe that we already have that in the record. Uh, and then lastly, regarding the marking of the handicapped, uh, of the parking spaces as, uh, handicapped only. Uh, we again pushed back on this, uh, for a few reasons. So qualifying as a disabled individual or an individual with a disability within the meaning of the ADA does not necessarily mean that one qualifies or needs a handicap parking sticker. Uh, we'll get to the definition of disability a little bit later, but, uh, one example is that those suffering from mental illnesses or in recovery from substance use disorders, they are considered disabled within the meaning of the ADA, and they may not qualify for or need a handicap parking sticker. Uh, moreover, many of our disabled members who come to the site for meetings or events are often carpool, or are driven by people who may not necessarily qualify for a handicap sticker. So what we suggested instead, and I did hand out a copy in advance. So, what we suggested instead, and I did hand out a copy in advance to the commission, just so we had it in hard copy, was that we mark a total of 13 spaces on-site as handicapped parking only. That draft plan that we, I don't want to interrupt you, Commissioner Grimes, I apologize.
Timer just go on.
I hope I get more than three minutes. Okay. So, we took our original proposed site plan, and we basically just put red markings or red dots on the 13 parking spaces that we are intending to mark either with signage or pavement markings as handicapped parking only. That works out to roughly 25% of the proposed parking on-site, more than required by code and more than required by the regulations. So, given all this new information that the commission has, I'm going to try and wrap it up in a package with the proposed approval conditions that we included at Tab 1 of our September 5th submission. So, at Attorney Beecher's request, we have agreed to and suggested an approval condition requiring the annual certification from the applicants, that the reasonable accommodation continues to be necessary, as well as a, what Attorney Beecher called, a sunset provision, where the accommodation will expire if the owner or less see of the property, whether they be the applicants or successor in interest, no longer qualify for a reasonable accommodation in accordance with the ADA. That was a request of Attorney Beecher's. I personally don't think it's required by the ADA, but we are trying to work with the town and accommodate Attorney Beecher's request, so we have suggested that as an approval condition. We also included for the board's comfort and approval condition that the club will continue to operate from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., noting in that condition that those rare times that someone is on-site to set up or clean up from an event is not considered a violation of that provision. We proposed a condition requiring the installation of motion sensors and timers on the lighting in the parking lot, and those lights can only come on between the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And then, lastly, this was not written in our package, but in light of my exchange with Attorney Beecher via email which I just described, we're also proposing that the commission impose the requirement that 13 of the 49 proposed parking spaces be marked as handicapped only whether via signage or pavement markings. So, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my summary of what I'll call the new application materials from the applicant, but I do want to take a few minutes and turn to public comment, submitted since the last meeting, or more appropriately coined perhaps as the public opposition. So, when I was writing my outline for my presentation tonight, I was having a little bit of trouble deciding how to broach this subject, because it's not something that I typically address in this much detail for these applications, but I think this calls for it, and I decided to start unfortunately with the source of much of the opposition against the applicants and their proposal, which is the neighbor, Mr. Vasirka at 198 Candlewood Road. He has not only, and certainly he is here to speak for himself during public comment, but he has not only during the course of this application, but during prior applications, on appeal with town staff, with town officials, the town attorney, and likely countless others, he has spun a defamatory and jurious narrative of the SOCO club and the VFW being disruptive, disrespectful, dishonest neighbors who party too much, make too much noise, leave trash on their own property, and the list goes on and on and on regarding these defamatory statements. Recall that the commission has in the record testimony and written letters from many other neighbors in the area that have a very different opinion, but in any event, Mr. Vasirka's allegations essentially challenge and put into question the applicant's credibility, which is why, at this time, I really can't let it go unaddressed, and we did have to put some information regarding his alleged motives into the record. And even though this application is about the Americans with Disabilities Act and not Mr. Vasirka's complaints, we feel it's important for the commission to understand the root of this. So, he again will be afforded an opportunity, like every other member of the public, to speak during public comment, but I'll point the commission, our September 5th submission again, we provided a little bit of a historical narrative, if you will, at Tab 1, with some documents at Tab 4. And I'll start with reminding the commission that Mr. Vasirka purchased his property in 1994. That's five years after the 1989 special permit that's been discussed repeatedly here and is at issue in this application was granted. And that's 13 years after SOCO operated, purchased the site and had been operating on-site at 202 Candlewood Lake Road. As detailed in our Tab 1 narrative, at some point, Mr. Vasirka had a, what I'll call, a handshake agreement with SOCO leadership at that time, where he could park cars, whether guests, contractors, whoever it may be, on SOCO property with permission. His use of the site was so frequent that he constructed a gravel driveway from his property onto SOCO's, and that's actually depicted on the 2013 survey that we submitted with our original application materials in June, but we submitted a marked-up copy at Tab 4 of our most recent submission, so the commission can see that driveway that was installed by Mr. Vasirka. The commission will also see at Tab 4 a handwritten note from Mr. Vasirka thanking the club for his use of their site for parking about a dozen cars in July 2001. You also see, incidentally, a note from the club's handyman at that time, noting that on that same date, while cars were being stored on SOCO property, Mr. Vasirka didn't have any at all on his driveway. By 2013, however, the SOCO board had become so concerned with Mr. Vasirka's use of their site for parking, and had ultimately concluded that they were being taken advantage of, that they decided to terminate that handshake agreement, as I called it, and commission a survey of the property. We included a copy of those minutes in our package as well. And so it began. Mr. Vasirka began dumping materials on our site. The commission has several police reports regarding that activity in the record. He began filing complaints regarding the allegedly excessive use of the site, a use that again had been permitted and not challenged in any material way in decades. And again, here we are today, still trying to solve a parking problem for SOCO and the VFW, and now with well over a dozen letters, many of which have been written by friends and family of Mr. Vasirka, many of whom don't live near the site, not even in Brookfield for some, demanding that our disabled veterans find somewhere else to park, even after existing at this site for 45 years and operating the site as a club for 45 years. It is, and I'd be remiss if I didn't point out, it is ironic that the very parking that Mr. Vasirka and his friends seek to limit is the same parking used by him for years where his own gatherings. It wasn't disrupted then, apparently. So, Mr. Vasirka, as Commissioner Grimes had pointed out, has gone so far as to demand Commissioner Grimes' recusal, and the only thing I'll know is I did submit a letter to Attorney Beecher when I saw that recusal come through, again, reiterating what Commissioner Grimes said, which is, the request does not meet the legal standard for recusal or the standard for disqualification in this commission's bylaw, so we are in accord with that. So, moving beyond these motivations, I do want to address the overall theme that the commission saw in these letters in opposition, which resoundingly was the theme that the club use is improper in the R-40 residential zone, and that it cannot be allowed to expand. We saw that repeatedly in, if not every single letter, then almost every single letter that was submitted. I want to be abundantly clear, the applicants are lawfully operating this site as a club, and they have been doing so frankly since 1981, but then reaffirmed in 1989 when they had their building expansion. The 1989 special permit, again, contrary to some of the allocations we're seeing in the record, did not provide an occupancy restriction, did not limit the number of events, did not limit hours, or any other limitations that we've seen coming through as allegations that we've violated, but there were limits, of course, on parking, signage, and lighting, which is why we're here today. I'll also point out that the regulations today still allow clubs, lodges, and community houses in the R-40 zone by special permit. The regulations permit actually much more intense uses in the R-40 zone, including, as this commission knows, schools, childcare centers, museums, hospitals, convalescent homes, fire or police stations, and the list goes on. Just because a zone is called a residential zone or a residential district does not mean that the permitted uses, permitted as of right or specially permitted, are exclusively limited to residential uses, and that is perfectly, that's illustrated in the commission's own regulations. And importantly, even if the regulations change today, if the commission passed an amendment tomorrow prohibiting clubs in the R-40 zone, the club would still be allowed to operate as a protected pre-existing non-forming use pursuant to its prior approvals. Regarding the outcry that the alleged expansion of the, excuse me, the use on-site, those, with all due respect, those concerns are misplaced. I said it at the last hearing, and I will say it again, we are not seeking to expand the use on-site. There's no footprint expansion, no change in operations, no request for greater hours or occupancy limits, which again are set by the fire, fire marshal in Brookfield and the state marshal at 115 people, not by the commission. We are simply providing the parking, lighting, and signage needed so that our disabled members can utilize the club as it was originally approved. In any event, I'll remind the zoning commission, this is an application again for a reasonable accommodation under the ADA, a 1990 federal civil rights law that prohibits discrimination against people with disabilities and everyday activities, in which again explicitly allows the commission, just like this one, to modify its regulations and practices to accommodate disabled individuals. I'll come back to that test in my closing comments, but I'll remind the commission that it has a letter from Attorney Beecher in the record encouraging and counseling the commission to look at the ADA and really focus on the test, because that is the nature of the application, and that's what the law dictates. Lastly, I would like to spend just a moment on the report submitted by Ms. Morelli. I did discuss my reflection on the report at Tab 1 of our September 5th materials. The commission will recall, it was submitted in advance or contemporaneously with, I can't recall the last public hearing, we did not have a chance to review since we hadn't received a copy, so I did provide a response, a high-level response in our materials on September 5th. In that report, Ms. Morelli opined on noise, property values, and various legal principles, including her interpretation or thought that the special permit should be revoked, which again would be illegal. So, and I say this with all due respect, but I do have the obligation to point out, since Ms. Morelli has put herself forth as an expert in these fields, that she does not have the qualifications to opine on these technical and complicated issues. She is not an acoustical engineer, an appraiser, or an attorney, and again, I say that with all due respect. We've included a copy, we don't have a copy of her CV in the record, but we do have a copy of her LinkedIn profile in our September 5th submission, so that the commission can see her training, and it's certainly not in these areas. I'm not going to go line by line of her report, I believe it's around 18 pages, but I will give just one example as to why the report should be disregarded frankly in its entirety, and at the very least, the commission should really take a close eye of the allocations in that report. For example, the, there was reference repeatedly to alleged despicable readings, noise readings from Mr. Vasirka's property. The readings are unreliable, where we don't know when they were taken, how they were taken, with what machinery, from where, or any other details that would be required in pursuing a noise, a noise complaint via the town's noise ordinance. The noise ordinance itself actually, which is enforced by the police, not this commission, requires that anyone taking sound measurements be trained and have the equipment necessary, and there's no indication that either Mr. Vasirka or Ms. Morelli have that training. The findings in the report regarding noise were also unlikely. When the levels allegedly captured on the SOCO property were akin to, and this is in the report, a rock concert or a loud motorcycle, there was a suggestion that readings of 120 decibels were captured on-site, and then on another page, there was a chart explaining that that's akin again to a rock concert. One would presume and hope that if there were rock concerts, rock concert levels of noise coming from the SOCO property repeatedly, that the police would have stepped in, but again, that is beyond the purview of this commission. Mr. Ms. Morelli, excuse me, did author a new letter to the commission, it was submitted since the last public hearing. It focused essentially on the special permit from, excuse me, 1989, and the importance of maintaining the residential character of the neighborhood, which again, for all the reasons I discussed, are irrelevant. This is an application for reasonable accommodation, not a wholesale review of the existing special permit, which remains in effect regardless of what this commission does. With that, Mr. Chairman, those are my comments. I'm going to hand it over to Mr. O'Masta, and then Mr. Beal, and then respectfully, we are here to answer questions, or we can just turn directly to public comment.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman and commission members, my name is Mark O'Masta, O-M-A-S-T-A. Currently the president of SOCO, a lifetime SOCO member. Some of the negative or opposition letters that I read today, covered by Andrea, I just want to go over a couple of things that seem to be unclear, even after 10 years of going through this. Along with the 1989 special permit allowing us to be a club in a residential zone, the town approved a building permit for the renovation and expansion at that time to really convert the residence into a commercial assembly building. And since then, that was all approved, and since that day in 89, we have been held to the commercial building and fire code standards. Everything in that building has to be up to code. Recently, we just renovated a bathroom and added a second bathroom. Everything had to be commercial. We're not a resident, we haven't been a residence for 45 years. We had hired an architect, we had hired an engineer, just for a simple project. So, it's definitely commercial, and the fire marshal set the occupancy at 115 people inside. We're not expanding anything. It's been the same sized building since 1989. We just, along with that occupancy, we were just not giving adequate parking to use the And just for a clarification, at a public hearing, I think it was last year, a commission member did state, for the record, on the record, that the SOCO club was a few old men playing cards back in late 1980s. I just want to make clear that that was never the case. We were formed in 1902, we're a fraternal organization, 501(c)(3), we're part of National SOCO USA, where there's probably over 70 lodges across the country, and it's actually an international organization. So, we were never a few old men playing cards. We have a lot of elderly people in our club, including me, but I haven't seen a card game there in 45 years. Back then, we were a much larger organization to hear about. We overextended, we're expanding our use. We were a much bigger club in 1989, 1980s, 1990s than we are now. We had twice as many members than we do now. We were robust, a lot of these organizations, fraternal organizations were more robust back then. Even with the VFW joining us and the auxiliary, we have less members than we did back in 1989, so we were not just a few people, old folks playing cards. So, we have less functions, especially outdoor functions than we did back then, way less. I think we're, it's off the record, I think we're average about eight functions a year outside of meetings over the last 10 years, which is the use is way down. But with the parking restrictions as they are, we can't even hold a regular meeting. We don't have enough parking spaces to have a regular meeting of 20 or 25 people. So, what's happened is a lot of our members, lifelong members, just not to come. They can't fight the crossing Candlewood Lake Road, they can't, they have to fight offsite parking, and for people that have been lifelong members, they just, they're missing out on the club that they, the members of their whole life. So, per my affidavit, many of the members have disabilities, and our elderly SOCO members, VFW, over 95% of them have a rated disability through the VA from their service to this country. So, all we are asking for is for you folks to follow the ADA federal guidelines for reasonable accountability, so we could park on our site, and which we have plenty of space for. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. I'm Joe Beal, I own a house at five Maple Tree Road in Brookfield. I'm the Commander of the Brookfield VFW, spent twenty-two years active duty Air Force. I'm a disabled veteran, confirmed and determined by the Veterans Administration, and interestingly, I was in the Pentagon twenty-three years ago yesterday while serving with the Air Force when terrorists flew flying into. I know that while my members and I have served, and any combat scene or hostile fire received is not relevant to your decision, however, a disability status is. This request is based on a reasonable accommodation under the ADA. Most of my members are disabled veterans. When we hold meetings once a month, I often park across Candlewood Lake Road to allow my more senior Vietnam War veterans to park in the parking lot. I want to absolutely be sure we don't go over thirteen cars. Knowing if we do reach fourteen cars, we're going to be reported to the town with company aerial drone photos and pictures. As Commander, I bring coffee and donuts to our meetings along with a briefcase with meeting materials. Without getting into my disabilities or health conditions, I have trouble walking. Trying to carry a box of coffee, donuts, and paperwork while not making traffic is very difficult. I can't move as fast as I once did, and I'd be lying if I didn't say walking across Candlewood Lake Road isn't stressful. I can, however, move faster than my friends who served in Vietnam War. There absolutely have been times where veterans have missed meetings when the parking lot was at thirteen cars because they simply can't walk across Candlewood Lake Road. The opposition has said, "Don't do it, and move somewhere else." Why? I do it because of the responsibility I have to the men and women of our host. We served, became injured, and now some are telling us to leave and move along because we can't be accommodated. I hope this Commission in Brookfield will grant this humble request of reasonable accommodations under the American Disabilities Act for disabled men and women who are very deserving. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, again, I defer to you, but we can do Commissioner comments at this time, or public comment, and then reserve, of course, my right to have closing comments at the end.
Sure, I'm just going to ask a couple of questions because some of the, the Attorney Beechers, you know, he puts some of my questions towards you.
Yep.
To you.
Yes.
The one reason we asked about membership, or my query was, how many actual total people? So Socal says eighty, and VFW has fifty, and the auxiliary has a few more, but there's overlaps, so there's not a hundred and thirty people, there's actually less. So I wanted to know the overlaps, what is the total?
So I will place a pot, because I have all of that information, but I don't have it handy off the top of my head. I will ask Mr. O'Masta to get me rough numbers. I believe our affidavit said, again, active, eighty active Socal, not our affidavit, Mr. O'Masta's affidavit for the record, said approximately eighty active Socal members, about a quarter of which are disabled, and then fifty active VFW members, I think ninety-eight percent approximately, which are disabled, twenty-four auxiliary. So I won't ask Mr. O'Masta to, and I'll come back to you, Mr. Chairman, the rough total number of active members that use the site. But again, and again, I respectfully understand the Commission's interest in the question, but I don't believe that that provides any information that's really relevant to whether or not we meet the standards of the ADA.
I guess, I guess for me, and then the other Commissioners would say, you know, taking that number and then leading to what's the, what should the accommodation be based on, how many people are disabled? So, you know, out of the fifty, out of the fifty was, I forget what the percentage was. Oh, out of the eighty is twenty-five percent, so there's twenty. Out of the fifty, it's ninety-eight percent, there's forty-nine, but it's not the, that's not the total number. The reason, and the reason I'm asking is because you brought this up and you answered about the placard. We've heard a lot of testimony about, it is difficult for some people who have trouble walking or anything to get across the road. So from my naive view, I thought you were talking about just that, and it sounds like to me, the parking is to solve that problem, people not having to walk across the road that have problems. And so that's, I'm, you know, trying to say, what are we accommodating? Are we accommodating, you know, one particular disability or all of them, and how does parking relate to any disability, or does it relate to a specific disability? Because, you know, they want us to make an accommodation, but we have to know exactly what I feel, like we have to know why, and what sort of, you know, parking, specifically why.
Understood. So putting aside, and again, Mr. O'Masta's working on that number, that rough number of total active members, but let's put aside, I'm looking at Mr. O'Masta's affidavit now, it's at Tab Five of our original submission, let's pretend Socal's not even on site in terms of, again, just number of people there. We have forty-nine active VFW members with disability ratings from the VFW, and two auxiliary members with, who are also disabled. Again, specific details on the nature of that disability is not required. Again, collective information on the disability is required, but I think the concern is twofold. It's not just forcing some of our disabled members to cross Candlewood Lake Road, park up the street, cross from Candlewood East and cross the road, which for all the reasons we've discussed and the testimony we heard, is risky. I don't think anyone's disputed that regarding the nature of Candlewood Lake Road, but also just access to the site. If you have these forty-nine disabled veterans coming to the VA Services meeting where the representative from the VA comes to discuss benefits, insurance, filing claims, et cetera, et cetera, we don't have enough parking on site. And part of the reason that we looked at that forty-nine was given the number of forty-nine members who are disabled. That tied in well, we will say, when we were evaluating a site configuration that worked for the applicants and also was required for the disability, the disabled members.
All right, and, you know, you've come to us for an accommodation. Has, what has Socal done for accommodation? Before you come to us, have they done anything themselves to accommodate their, their members vis-à-vis ADA?
Oh, well, they just actually installed a handicap ramp. Funny that you're talking about that, Mr. Chairman. I believe just a couple of weeks ago, there was a, approved by the town, handicap ramp that was installed. You know, I can ask Mr. O'Masta if there's, or.
All related to coming to this site for meetings and stuff?
Oh, I apologize, I thought you meant just generally.
I know, just, I mean, in the context of this, and making accommodations.
So, I mean, you heard, for example, Mr. Beal, and this, these are all stories, of course, we can have the members come up and tell their own stories, but I know from my discussions with the applicants and their members, there have been times where people have been dropped off by someone unaffiliated with the site, there's been carpool arrangements, there have been, you know, come to the site, leave your car, and I, a non-disabled or abled person, will take your car and park it across the street at Candlewood East. There's been a lot of maneuvering to ensure that there's no violation of this thirteen car rule, given the eyes that are on the property in particular. So there's been a lot of, for lack of a better word, maneuvering to try and accommodate these disabled members to ensure that they can attend, offers to drive people to the site for these meetings. If parking has surpassed or will surpass the thirteen spaces, and the list goes on and on.
And the last comment or question I had, there was, I thought I heard a comment saying, you know, they're limited by the number of meetings and stuff because of the thirteen restriction, thirteen parking spot restriction, implying that if they had forty-nine, more activity would happen on site.
Well, I think that there's a, first off, I will say that, as I noted, the nineteen eighty-nine special permit does not have a limit on the number of functions that can occur at the site. We have records going back decades, in the last decade, we've only seen roughly eight events, and that's excluding COVID, per year. If there's additional parking on site, could there conceivably be some more events? Yes, but as you heard Mr. O'Masta testify, the overall usage of the site, and I can tell you this just from my own knowledge and what I do, fraternal organizations in general, usage is down, membership is down, interest is down. It's certainly down from what it was in nineteen eighty-nine when the Commission approved the special permit in the first place. So I can't tell you if the eight will go to nine or ten, but I can tell you that there's no indication or no intent on either of the applicants to expand the use. That's not what this application is for. It's to accommodate the existing use by providing the parking, lighting, and signage needed for our disabled members.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners like to ask some questions? So I'll just go to four against them.
Thank you.
Let's see, I'm going to go off the list I have here. Here we go. This is, by the way, we have received correspondence into our Land Use Office, that's all up on the website, we're not going to read it into the record, but they can be looked at by anybody who goes on to the website. So the first, Joe Beal already spoke, so Tim Walsh, this is for sporting comments, people like to speak in favor of the application? Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Is there any questions of clarification before we go on? All right, seeing none. Do comments for? Tim Walsh?
Tim Walsh, sixteen Farmville Road, Brookfield. Thanks for your three minutes. From last time, yes. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I think it's time for this nightmare to be resolved for both sides. To think of the resources used throughout the years, the time, the stress, the anger, the distrust, it needs to end. What good has been forced not to happen because of this is beyond sad. As a fellow homeowner in town, I have always supported our neighbor's right to defend his home, but after all these years and all these hearings, wouldn't it be best to just accept each other and act as neighborly as possible? I have reached my limit in understanding what our neighbor's intentions are, but as is his right, he continues to drag this out. I wish, we wish, no ill will to anyone as we are an active community-based host. We've worked with Socal to beautify the property and to fit in as best as possible with our beautiful neighborhood. The issue here is safety. Everyone in this room knows Candlewood Lake Road is a speedway with increased traffic, increased homes, and distracted drivers. We all know it. This puts our elderly members at risk. I'm fifty-six years old and one of the youngest members. I am angry and sad that I have to reveal in public that I have created a seventy percent disability by the VA from my military service, and it possibly might force me to cross Candlewood Lake Road if I'm car number fourteen. It should not be up to the kindness of our other neighbor to the north Candlewood East to provide us with safe parking. We are not asking for charity, we are not asking for a charity vote from this board. We do charity for our town amongst many other roles. We are the Socal Lodge, and we are the veterans of foreign laws, and we serve Brookfield proudly. We are asking for safety. Again, this nightmare needs to end so that all involved can move on and find happiness in our beautiful town. I respectfully suggest, the answer may not be found outside of a window, or in a security camera, or in a drone falling overhead, but rather, look in the mirror. I know we can be great neighbors and citizens of Brookfield if we can just try. I'm more than willing to try. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Walsh, Matt Walsh? Thank you. Travis O'Masta?
Hello, my name's Travis O'Masta, New Fairfield resident and Socal Club member. Twenty-one Indian Hill Road, New Fairfield, Connecticut. I've been a Socal member my entire life, forty-one years now. Entirely located at that property, I'm a fourth generation member of the club. I have fond memories, not of old men and cousins of the club, but as a little kid running around the lake, running around the dock, Christmas parties with all my second cousins, third cousins, and a bunch of family that wasn't family by blood, but family by heritage relation and whatnot. I've enjoyed use of the club over all the years, both as a kid and as hosting a party for one of my friends in celebration of his wedding prior to the nuptials, and that's one of the events that I came here to talk about. I saw on the video of the meeting last week that Mr. Vessurka said that he is the victim, that people are making up all these stories, and realistically, we don't need to make up stories because the truth is so crazy to paralyze North Carolina. For this particular party, it was on January of two thousand and nineteen. We had permission from Mitch, thankfully, to park some cars across the street that is Candlewood East's property. And I had someone come in, as I was the host, I was the member, and I was representing the club, and tell me that Mitch's daughter was outside of the club, or telling our members that we did not have permission to park there. This was not true. I went out there, I did not find a woman pretending to be Mitch's daughter, but I did see a car with all its lights on parked off in the corner, watching everyone park, and just sitting there in the dark, concerned. I contacted some of the members of the club, I believe the police were contacted, and myself and a couple other gentlemen walked over. The car left quickly and did not return. So, again, we don't need to tell lavish stories, these are the behaviors that happen. As a result of this, I was not able to use the club for my wife's baby shower this just past summer. We did not feel comfortable asking some of our old family members, some of her family members, to walk across the street, so someone who has had lifelong use of the club was denied use of the club because of these restrictions and the safety of our members. And what I'm asking the Board to do is to approve this so we can have lavish baby showers and raise a ruckus, I guess we're doing, to just enjoy our time in our beautiful property with our family members and our club. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Audience members, the speaker favored the application, the application and the regulations, and those who speak against, speak against the application or the regulations. Can I cover stories? It's all right, the list is out there. I know, sometimes we have long meetings, Matt. Does anybody else like to speak in favor of the application? Yes, sir. Oh, it says, "Tim Reeves," was someone crossing that, or is it, or see?
Steven O'Masta.
Oh. Maybe he did the wrong one. But, that's all right.
Steven O'Masta, fourteen Foxborough Road, Danbury. Steven with a P-H, by the way.
I'm sorry, I see.
I have some prepared remarks. I'm going to cover some of them, so some of this might be a little redundant, but I'm going to say it anyway. So I've been a Socal member since I was born, seventy-one years ago. I am the current Financial Secretary and retired Danbury Firefighter, forty-three years of service. Andrea covered most of the ADA stuff, and today she covered some stuff that I'm going to cover also, and I didn't know that, so bear with me. I want to talk about facts and what's fair and right. Before moving here, Socal owned the Lakey property in Danbury, which we sold to the density of Danbury, which is now Hatters Park. Before that, we were on River Street, where Kimberly, or, I'm sorry, the. The new apartments. The flood of nineteen fifty-five took our properties, so we had. So we moved our present location to, to Candlewood Lake Road in nineteen eighty-one, forty-three years ago. That was thirteen years before Mark Vessurka bought his property. He knew, or should have known, that we were a club. Okay? And when he bought the property anyway, we have been good neighbors for forty-three years to everyone involved, including Mark Vessurka. We allowed him to store his dock on our property in the off-season. We let him build a road between our property so he could park his cars on our property. So that cars wouldn't have to walk Candlewood Lake from, he could just go from his driveway to our driveway. We had to stop our goodwill with Mark because he took advantage of us. He used our property without permission. He dumped garbage on our property. He's harassed us for twenty years, the last ten on steroids. He complains to the town every time he sees work going on. We get permits for work, he calls the town. The town, who knows or should know that we have permits, come out to the site and check our site. Do, do they do this to anyone else in town? This is every time something is done. This is harassment. It has to stop. Now, just down the road, down, down the hatch, is surrounded on all sides by single-family residences, and they seem to, and they, they, and they seem to be okay. Our lead to the north...
Sir, sir, you know, three minutes.
Matt, time's up, Matt.
Our application is supported by respected organizations and...
Sir, please. You know, we have, we've been here a long time, we had a long meeting last time. I understand, you know, your concern and your message. Uh, is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of the application, sir?
Nothing parathizing work and speaking in public, and I never planned on coming up here. I have to. My name is Frank O'Farrell, ninety-four, up to Silk Road, Brookfield, Connecticut. I lived here since I was born, bought my home in two thousand and six. I raised my family here, a police officer and veteran. I'm a veteran. I just retired after thirty-two years of providing active duty and reserve service. Was an Iraqia of three, entered combat. Went back in two thousand and eight, I went to Somalia in twenty seventeen, and I just retired. I'm proud of my service. I've never shared it with anybody publicly. I also have a forty percent VA disability rate. I won't go into why. I'm spry. I can count to thirteen with the vest up, so I park across the street so the older members can park. People in my family, I have daughters of pediatric cancer survivors. Three to five years post-alegn surgeries and chemotherapy, she was either on a wheelchair or she was on crutches. I didn't bring her. It was easier when I did. I'd have to try and drop her off with my wife, park across the street, but if there's twelve, thirteen, can't count that many cars, I dropped them off as quick as I could. Or, on one particular occasion, we parked over, thank you to, uh, Echo Bay Arena, parked across the street, and I brought my daughter on crutches across the street so she could be around other kids with parents that are veterans. We're different, right? Maybe a little special, maybe a little special, I don't know. You call whoever you wanna see, right? When it's different, okay? I parked across the street, she walked on crutches, right? Because we had to, because I wanted her to be part of this organization. And this town's been amazing to me as a veteran and as a parent of a cancer survivor. I also try and help out where I can with an organization called Heroes on the Water. It's an organization, um, for veterans and now first responders where we get veterans and first responders and their families out on water in kayaks and fish. Giving veterans just an opportunity to do something positive, right? Five or six of our members are veterans. We host them at the two, oh, two Candlewood Lake facility. And we bring our kayaks there, there's two pickup trucks and it's two trailers, and then there's the deuce and a half and my car, that's more than half the parking that's taken up, all right? So, we make sure we do as fast as we can. We're focused, we're inviting, calling, do something fun and positive at this amazing facility, twenty, thirty people, not a raucous crowd, right? We have to make sure that we're shuttling the back and forth. On one particular occasion, I know for sure, we're almost at capacity, somebody we didn't know would come in, somebody didn't register, came in, I asked them if they could park across the street and how it come and pick them up. They said, "Just, uh, forget it, we'll come back another time." We missed an amazing opportunity to share time and positive event with other veterans. Everyone knows semantics, it's me asking, it's, it's one person with some unknown agenda. Why does that...
But thank you, thank you. Uh, anybody else like to speak in favor? Yes, sir. If, if, if anybody, everybody who'd like to speak in favor, can you stand up if you can in the line so we can...
My name is Guy Holick. I live at sixty Stanley, our firm, Danbury, Connecticut.
Please spell your last name.
H O L I C K. I, um, I'm a lifetime member also for SOCL Lodge Thirty, and, um, past president, past financial secretary, past board director's chair. Well, actually, the whole lodge grew up. Not gonna go through the stories like you've heard because those stories are very meaningful and they, you can't repeat these things often enough. We're here to your committee to ask a very simple request. We're looking for the safety of our, of our, of our membership at SOCL Lodge Thirty and the safety of the veterans that are using our lodge for their meetings. It's very, very simple, basic request that we have for the town is for the safety of our membership. We don't need to have an accident of someone walking across the street for no reason at all, simply because we have parking, we have room for parking, but we just can't accommodate our, 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 our membership. And that's all I'd like to say in favor of this. Please consider the safety of all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Peron, two zero nine Carmichael Road, Millford, Connecticut, zero six seven seven six, senior vice commander of the Brookfield VFW. Uh, the majority of the members of this committee have been privy to this ongoing fight for years now, and in one capacity or another. During the last meeting, a member admitted to our goal, to our father gene, that they have never made, uh, never visited the property, which is located on the second is, second busiest road in town. We had the decision before ours, members had time to stop by Vale Road and look at property regarding commercial parking. I've also noticed after attending the majority of these meetings, that there's never been any question toward Mr. Vessurka regarding what would be a reasonable accommodation, a resolution to put an end to all of this, given he's the only one opposed to our request for a reasonable accommodation under the ADA federal guideline. Even in a recent public social media post, Mr. Vessurka refused to list Brookfield VFW by name in his post because he knows he would get backlash. But this board knows, based on Vessurka's, uh, guest from last meeting, that all it wants is to not, three nonprofit organizations to vacate the premises, but it's not gonna happen, though it happens here today or any time going forward, but it won't say it publicly. Going back to the word reasonable, last meeting, we saw this man's ending what reasonable based on his actions, but it goes further than that. Mr. Rever, Mr. Vessurka called the state DMV to try and have our nineteen seventy-eight military deuce and a half removed from the property because of a threat. It's the same vehicle that we used in World Day Parade here in town, the Bridgewater Fair, and the same vehicle that was parked on the side of the road at twenty-five for years prior to our purchase. The same man who has sent individuals into the property to try and gain intel and ask pointed questions to help his case, drones, photos, all that, those sound very reasonable to me, but, uh, and the fact that actions are harassing in a nuisance, but I digress. I ask this to you the question, if you were doing renovations to your home, would you pay extra money and make several additions such as hand, uh, handicap ramps, commercial handicap hardware on doors, grab bars in bathrooms? The answer is no, you would. But due to the use of the building, these are the requirements that we're faced with, and they're requirements, mind you, not suggestions or hopefuls, these are requirements in order to make any type of progress. By this town building department and fire marshal's office, the fact is, this is the only committee in town that does not recognize the use of this building for what it is because you have to entertain Mr. Vessurka's nonsense. Majority of the people in this room have been subject to the phrase, "Thank you for your service," and it's greatly appreciated when, when received, but I believe it is time to stop wasting money and resources that could be going back into the community, and if there's ever gonna be some action behind the phrase, it is to, uh, grant us the reasonable accommodation to utilize the property safely and peacefully from here on out. We don't come to as victims, as Mr. Vessurka does, no one in this room that has worn the uniform ever would, but we just ask for a reasonable accommodation under the ADA to use the property for all three nonprofit organizations.
All right, thank you.
My name is, uh, Bill Peron, twenty-seven, Vale Road, Brookfield. Um, I'm here to tell you that the use of the building is on our side for the veterans. I am part of the, the Veterans Club as far as, um, supporting them, supporting them for whatever they do, all the good that they do in the community. We had a meeting tonight of the OJ. Two of our members have parked across the street because we couldn't park and have a meeting. I've been one of them, so one of our older members could be in the meeting. It's unfair, it's unjust, and it's, there's no reason for it. And I want you to understand something, okay? You look at everything that's been going on, everything that's been happening, okay? This is not about the VFW or SOCL being bad neighbors or everything that's been said about them. This is about the land, the land. This is the last piece of Mr. Vessurka's plan. He owns the property across the street, he owns the property next to the SOCL Lodge.
Could you just stick to the application?
Okay, and I'm telling you, that's what it's about. He wants the land and is willing to do anything for it. Thank you.
I have a clarification question. Yeah, we passed clarification question.
Good evening. Uh, Jason Polbreth, this is Lewis, uh, ninety-four Tower Road, Brookfield. Uh, I'm just here to support, uh, my fellows, and, uh, I don't go to the club very often because of the conflict that exists there. It's not a, uh, good place to relax and feel safe. Uh, there's conflict, there's frustrations, there's a constant underlying pressure that, uh, we're being watched or we're being listened to, we gotta watch what you say. I didn't do all this. I didn't fight for all this, for this type of, uh, response going home. So, uh, just showing my support and, uh, stuff's gotta stop. Gotta find a place for, uh, rest, whether it's parking or just, uh, you know, friendship. Thank you.
Does anybody else would like to speak in favor of this application? I'm hearing none. Uh, now we'll, uh, go to the people who are in opposition. The first one on the list is Jane Soladon. John's over. Okay.
So just, just before the timer starts, but to me, uh, my name's John Balaq, I'm with three babies, drive Brookfield. V, V I L A C Q U I. And please, I'm sure, like, to me, this is not about the veterans, I, I, and I'm sure everyone here truly appreciates what you've done.
Yeah, could you speak?
Yeah. I truly, truly appreciate what you've done. So this is not about that for me at all. And I do worry about the traffic, like, it's, you can start the timer, but, I, I worry about the traffic, I worry about that, it's a problem. And I think the rules were established for a reason, so that we didn't increase traffic, there weren't people crossing the street, right? They shouldn't be parking across the street. But adding more spaces allows for these excessive parties, increased traffic, they're, they're pulling out of there at ninety miles an hour, there's burnouts all over the place. Like, it's, it's excessive, and someone's gonna get hurt the other way. And I know the veterans don't want that. This is not about that. They said, you know, like, for meetings, yeah, carpool, and I'm over there. How many spaces do you need? You know, do we really need forty-nine? Four people in each car, and then we're gonna have three hundred people there? And you haven't enough traffic there already. It's really a problem. It really, really is. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, for the audience, please, no comments, no mumbling or anything, you know? Everybody gets a chance at the microphone without interruption. Thank you.
My name's Dino Legerschau, I'm Mark's sister. Spelled on the paper. Uh, I just wanna say, yes, Mark, uh, Patterson, New York, two... Two fifty-five, Havland Drive. Everyone is saying that Mark is the only one complaining, but Mark is the only neighbor directly next to this. On the other side is a marina, across the street there's a marina, there's no one else immediately affected. When Mark bought his home, he didn't buy a home next to a party house, it was under control, it was just the SOCL. And the, the thirteen-car requirement is, has kept it under control, has kept the numbers to a reasonable amount. Once the VFW was invited in, it became more and more people there. Even Judge Wazara, I think the name is, they had, my notes, um, had said that they should never have Judge Brayden Wazara, that said they should never have been invited in. It's a residential property that was given a small stipulation for a small club. It's not open to club after club after club. There's ten thousand members of VFW in, in the, in Connecticut, and you're talking club members, yes, and their families, and their kids, and their cousins. If they're gonna have, oh, I'm gonna have a party for my Aunt Mary's, where does it end? And if there's lots and lots of parking, then there's more and more people. More for a, a, a residential home next to a residential, small stipulation, a, a club next door. It's, it's, it's been denied time and time again. Yes, we've come to court year after year after year, and each time, it was shot down. And now they're talking about, uh, how many, uh, handicapped parking spaces? They have, they are presently permitted thirteen spaces, making them all handicapped. It, it, it doesn't, the reason there's thirteen spaces is to minimize the amount of people there. There's thirteen spaces, but that doesn't mean there's not hundreds of people. From the water to the sand to the grass to the house to the septic system to the front lawn, it's noisy, it's disruptive, and it's not a neighbor, anybody, that bought a home as beautiful as Mark's is anticipated having as a neighbor. You don't wanna, yes, he's on top of them wondering what's going on because nobody wants to constantly deal with a party house. The, the VFW has posts, meet at your post, you, you don't need to meet at this location. There are other locations, there were locations before this property became available to them. And why was this property available to them? In the original stipulations, it says it's for the SOCL. And if anything changes, it should revert back to residential. There's a septic system, it's a residential home. They might not all be there all the time. Yeah, great, they're gonna bring in, uh, porta-johns, but what about the meetings during the week? There's constant people there, constantly using the facility, constantly using all aspects of it.
Thank you. Robert Bellup.
Hello, I'm Robert Bellup. I live at one eighty-nine Candlewood Lake Road. I'm in the first cottage racing the club. And just wanted to say that it's a very dangerous road. I know I travel... I know I've traveled, obviously for the twelve years I've been there or longer, and you see people racing down the road, you have things going on. I know sometimes there's a policeman from Brookfield across the street from me that stays on the road watching people burn out their road and basically clapping about various things that go on there. But I just think that it's detrimental to the community. It's not really the way that people should be together, be kind to each other, and to love, and especially in this time of the world that we're in right now. And I just feel that any more traffic coming out of that parking lot is going, it's a very bad area coming up around that hill there. And it's really all I really wanna say. You know, I'd like for everybody to get along. It's not the way God's intent was meant to put us here.
Thank you. The next one on the list, Jane, you didn't want to go up?
My name is Jane Solental, C-E-L-E-N-T-A-L, one seventy-two North Lakeshore Drive, Brookfield. Good evening. My son Mark moved to his home on Candlewood Lake to enjoy a peaceful retreat, and instead it turned into a nightmare. For over ten years, my son had to endure the stress of large events, up to hundreds of people drinking, partying, loud music, and all by the members were the guests of SOLO, just a few feet from his home. This has taken a toll on my son's health. My husband and Amy Edren, who recently cast and was distraught in his five years with these issues. We're all supporters of the military, but something does not seem right here. For the past ten years, my son sent over sixty letters of nuisances and violation complaints to ZO. What has the commission done to respond, enforce, or act on any of the complaint letters and violations of the stipulations? Not much. The selective enforcement of play here, that the town acted properly, we would not be here tonight having this discussion. In nineteen eighty-nine, stipulations determined each's April thirtieth letter confirms the current stipulation, and it remains in effect today. What has the town done about the seventeen-year-lead parking spaces currently at the SOLO club? The stipulations are an agreement between the town and SOLO, not the VFW. The stipulations are to ensure the property retains its residential character by limiting parking to thirteen, occupancy to thirty, as well as no signage. Anything above should be considered a self-induced hardship. In two thousand and eighteen, SOLO invited VFW to join them with the stipulations in effect, shortly after occupancy was increased from thirty to one hundred fifteen. Why did the town ignore the stipulations, the repeated complaints of nuisance and a previous request? Ninety-nine percent of the letters and support are here from people that do not even live next door, they live miles away in other towns who would never have to endure this nuisance. Are the taxpayers of Brookfield aware that the town has spent well over forty thousand dollars in attorney fees on this matter? Enforcement never happened. I wonder how much more the taxpayers will spend on attorney fees. My son will never stop fighting for his rights. One day, my husband and I were in his backyard, and suddenly police came citing an accusation by a SOLO member or a guest accusing him of taking pictures of young girls in bikinis. This false and disgusting accusation was later dismissed by the Brookfield Police Department, just an example of some of the abuse of harassment that he's been put up with. ADA requires one handicap spot for every twenty-five spaces. Danbury and Newtown VFWs only have one to three handicap spaces. Even Judge Grayson Wazara ruled against the SOLO's request to increase parking and stated the VFW should never have joined the SOLO club. The applicant has obviously outgrown this property. The applicant is refusing the binding agreements that be avoided and ruin the residential character of the property. The applicant is unable to abide by the legally binding stipulations in place. Just imagine if this was your next one, you're three minutes, forty-nine parking spaces. Thank you.
By the way, our letters in the back. Block? I can't read the first.
Jack.
Or Jack.
He passed.
Oh, all right. What's that? Is that another block?
It's another block.
Another block? Relative?
Might have been tied.
Yeah. Steven Belida?
Hi, my name's Steven Belida, sixty-two Indian Trail, Brookfield. I just wanna first say I respect our veterans. Whenever I meet a veteran, I always thank them for their service. My wife happens to be a commissioner on this board. She, as a young lady, volunteered for the USO at a very troubling time in Southeast Asia. She went out there, gave respect to our servicemen and women, all selfishly. It was not a cakewalk, she had a lot of harrowing moments over there, but she also gave her service, and I respect everything she did. I hear a lot tonight about harassment and a lot that's coming from the neighbor. I wanna talk to you about harassment. A year ago, they had came in, the SOLO club came in with an application, and it was voted down.
Sir, I understand.
No, I'm getting to the harassment part. I'm sorry.
Your application's about the parking.
Right, it is, okay, but what happened was, after that, a few days later, my wife was at a veterans, honoring a veteran friend of ours, when a leader of the SOLO club snuck up behind her and asked her what kind of bribe she took for voting against it. Then he asked her, "How much money did you get?" That went on up until now. The most recent one, I'm just giving you two instances. The most recent one was after last month's meeting, where we were at a private function together, and she got up from the table away from me, and immediately, a SOLO member, who I know is a SOLO member, came over to her and started getting on her about how she had to vote the way they wanted her to vote. So we're talking about harassment and everything. So I looked further into this, of what's going on with the parking and what's going on with all of this. And I hear that, I started checking out with the neighbor, what's going on here? The vulgarity that's there, there's an order of protection against the SOLO club for going after this guy. And they talk about, he's the problem. Why, when I hear the last week's meeting, last month's meeting, I hear the man from Candlewood East say, "If somebody gets hurt, if those disabled people come across the street and they get hurt, it's the blood's on your hand." No, the blood's on their hands. Why did they bring in a group how many years ago without having an adequate space for them, without safe parking? They never brought this up a year ago, two years ago, six years ago, and now they're coming in because they found a new angle? They never worried about this before. Why would they bring all these disabled people in and put their lives in danger? It makes no sense. I thought it was just supposed to be the SOLO club, they're not supposed to bring in outside groups. Why did they bring the veterans in? And as that person said, most places have three disabled parking spaces. I go to, how many disabled people go over to ShopRite? There's five, six disabled parking spots. They're gonna ruin this, destroy this man's property with what they're doing, that's what this parking will do. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Stephanie Rossi? Oh, pass. Mary Jean Morelli? Is there, before you guys go up, 'cause you were up before, is there anybody else that'd like to speak in opposition that hasn't already? No one?
Mary Jean Morelli, fifty, Ted's Court, Cheshire, Connecticut. Well, I'm bored, as you know, I spoke last time I was there. First, I'd like to address the validity of my research, as addressed by Attorney Holmes. I never stated I was any of the things that she reported on, I'm a pro-volunteer consultant. I focus on unusual cases that require research, using qualitative methodology, and my research is fully referenced.
Could you get closer to the microphone?
Sure. I would like to remind the board, as the previous speaker mentioned, that the special permit that was approved in nineteen eighty-nine was for the Danbury Slavic Gymnastic Union SOLO club, which contained the listed special stipulations. The listed stipulations are highlighted as follows. To maintain residential character of the neighborhood, maximum parking spots of thirteen, maximum occupancy in the building at any time of thirty members, or thirty folks, maximum membership of fifty, no further addition or expansion, maximum boat mooring slips shall be one for the purpose of swimming safety, stipulation becomes null and void at transfer of ownership. And we'll also point out that at the previous August eighth meeting, that the, it was identified by admission that existing violations to the special permit and stipulations include failure to maintain residential character, members greater than fifty, parking of more than thirteen vehicles, and the illegal expansion of thirty spaces, seventeen of which, the thirty parking spaces they have there now have been deemed unlawful by the Board of Appeals and also acknowledged by, to be unlawful by Attorney Beecher. The SOLO club admitted during that meeting that their membership was declining, and thereby they brought in the VFW, and they admitted to having up to a hundred thirty members even during this meeting here now. The SOLO club also admitted that the site has held parties in excess of a hundred people, and we know that they should only be having up to thirty people at a time. This location, as a reminder, is in residential area, and the violations to the stipulations to two oh two Candlewood Lake Road have created ongoing nuisance, visual annoyance, and risk for environmental health to this residential neighborhood. The request for ADA parking is a self-induced hardship through the actions of the SOLO club by inviting the VFW here in the first place. They are also victims, and they should have been brought into this club and put into this position. According to the ADA, the minimum number of parking spaces per twenty-five spots is one, and encourage that they move to any of their thirteen, convert them to however many they need, one more however within the thirteen. We agree that, or we would ask the zoning commission to compel the SOLO club to regrade and re-landscape their parking area, return it to the original thirteen, seeing that they're still milling on the street, you know, in the parking area, that does affect the residential look of the neighborhood. Can I finish?
Uh, no. We're gonna be here so long, and you've submitted all.
I just made.
Yeah, we have it in there. Sure.
My name is Helen McKenna, and I actually live in New Berkeley, Connecticut, but I've been a friend of Mark's for, no, excuse me?
Full address.
Oh, ten Pheasant Drive, New Berkeley, Connecticut, zero six eight one two. I've been a friend of Mark and his family for the last thirty years. I've gone over to his house on multiple occasions in those years. In the last few years, I've kinda stopped going there because on many occasions I've gone there, the amount of people next door, it's not a peaceful place to be anymore. The reason I went there is because I am a cancer survivor also, and Mark very kindly had let me, you know, stay there just for recuperation by the leg, whatever. I'll also add that this is nothing against the veterans. My brother is an ex-Marine, he was in Desert Storm, I'm very much aware, I have lots of family members there. I also am a DMP, and I have trained multiple Air Force members in Barnes Jewish and St. Louis in trauma, so that we can go and help their fellow members, their fellow soldiers, Marine Corps, whoever. So it's nothing against the veterans. The only reason I'm standing here is because I'm listening to everything, and everything I'm hearing, it all points to that the club needed to grow exponentially for some reason because their membership was down, so they need more parking spots. However, forty-nine parking spots, even if you're wanting one person in each car, that equates to forty-nine people. Put three or four people in that, and somebody's came up and said that they had their friends shower or wedding thing there, so you're talking about not the member bringing in a friend who has another friend that can come in and have all of these parties, which I understand, and it's wonderful, it's brilliant. I'm here myself in Patterson in New York, my brother goes there. But they are, they were allocated that area, and they're in a, they're not in a residential neighborhood affecting somebody who pays, and they won't say this, the amount of taxes that he pays to Brookfield, maybe he's vested in the community, the upkeep of everything, and yet all of these other people who are coming and enjoying, which is beautiful, and I go there myself because of it. But they don't live there. They can go home to their nice quiet house and not have a party going on next door, especially in good weather, who you want enjoying because you chose to go there. Once again, I am a medical person, so I've known Mark for many, many years, and I know everybody doesn't think this, but the stress is very, very weary, and it's been detrimental to him. I don't think Mark is going, "Oh, I don't want the veterans here." Anyway, that's all.
Thank you. Your name doesn't have to be on the list, you just call it these. Oh, all right. I'm passed.
Jacqueline Block, Three Baby Drive. So, three Baby Drive. So, I was dating Mark back in, before, when he bought the house from Red Goods, and the SOLO club was very, very quiet, and we were living there, and it was a very peaceful neighborhood, very, like, there were no parties, maybe one, two a year, I would say, it was really, really quiet, quiet neighborhood. And through the years, I would say that it was a lot more than eight parties a year. It said that there was eight parties, maybe those kinds of events, and that's not really, in my opinion, from what I recall, that's not really a true statement. It was a lot, it's been increasingly over eight, eight parties a year. And I've noticed throughout the years of going to parties at his house, and just visiting and watching sunsets and such, it's a lot, the road itself on Candlewood is now in the home bay view and in the shores. There is a lot of activity going on at the SOLO club with all their, they've got people outside, and their hoo-ha, and they're having, I guess fundraisers and such, and there's a lot, I mean, I appreciate their fundraising, but it's a lot of commotion on the road, and there's a lot of speeding, and there's a lot of, I'm gonna say, accident-causing possibilities, aside from just the parties. So, I'm just trying to say that, you know, there's a, there's caution, a lot of caution. I think that forty-nine spaces would also bring on a lot more issues that we all need to reconsider. Thank you.
All right, thank you. It's your last one.
I'm last.
Three minutes, Bobby.
Three minutes. I got hours of trashy I gotta go take care of. Arthur's Circle two hundred Candlewood Lake Road, Brookfield, Connecticut. Wow, I gotta say, the trashy that has gone on here is unbelievable. With the SOLO club, first, I bet, I bet Paul Fika, he let me park the cars there two or three times, okay? They're lying to him. Andrew's making up stuff because she gets paid to do that. Then she should learn some fashion. But anyway, the, the.
The personal.
Well, come on, we're all attacking me here, guys, let's get here. The driveway, gravel driveway, that was so I could take my quad and my cart down to the beach and clean it for free. That's what that was for. They're making up these stories, it was something else. Now, you're talking about these parties and how peaceful and how nice they all are, but what they don't understand, one of the parties got that place, okay? And what they're saying is, "I gotta get my blind socks." Okay, it's fifty feet from my bedroom. This is what I had to put up, but the neighbors are all hearing it, this party went on, the police came, they stayed for a couple of minutes, and then they left, and then the music went back on. I'm all for partying, it's excessive right now, there's a thing, there's like, you know, an annoyance, but this is becoming a nuisance. But over ten years, every law firm I have spoken to recently has said, "This is slam dog, this is definition, this is, this is unbelievable." dunk, this is definitely, this is, this is unbelievable, derelict of duty for this town. I asked the zoning enforcement officer, Fran was reviews at the time, I'm gonna talk to Beecher. Beecher says, really, it's the Fran, it's the zoning enforcement officer. This has gone on for ten, twelve years. Every one of you have a right to be supplied, so do I. Forty-nine cars outside my bedroom door slamming, slamming, and everybody here with the tents is, okay, there's one gentleman here, big guy, you know, he, I, he's a big talk, like he's the type of guy I can talk to, he's logical, he's reasonable, not this other people here, they all come in here thinking they're gonna try to bully me and do all this kind of stuff. I'm taking this to the end, okay? We're gonna have to figure out a way that we can live in harmony, but I'll tell you right now, the way that these people treat me, giving me fingers when they come off my boat and defaming me throughout the town is gonna stop and if I have to do it legally, I won't do that. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in opposition?
Yeah. Louise McGinty, M.C.G.I.N.T.Y., Brewster, New York. Okay. Obviously, I am an American, excuse me, and I'm middle name, okay, Abby? Can I have yours? So, I, obviously, I am an American citizen, I thought last year, I have lived here for thirty-five legally and I'm just gob-stocked. Yes, every time I see a police officer, soldier, at the airport or whatever, I say thank you and I thank them, but I'm saying that they all fought, what did they fight for? They fought to have your right, to have peace in your own land. This is Mark's land and he does not have peace and they are trying to push him out. It goes against what they went to fight for, in my opinion. Thank you.
Is there anybody else like to speak in opposition? All right, seeing that, make sure you come.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again for the record, Honore Gomes, counsel for the applicant. You know, Mr. Chairman, I, I will say, I, I do have to just start the comment, start with the comment that the insults that Mr. Visserka attempted to lob at me was wholly inappropriate and, um, I don't even know what to say. If the commission would like, I'd be happy to put my education and experience and qualifications into the record.
It was uncalled for.
Thank you.
I followed that.
I'm sure. So, Mr. Chairman, the question that you had asked earlier was about crossover. I was working with Mr. O'Masta looking at our membership list. Uh, we have roughly approximate, roughly twenty, a twenty-member crossover between SoCo and the VFW and auxiliary. So there's about twenty members that are crossover between, again, separating VFW and auxiliary from SoCo. That's a rough number. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to do a couple of things. I'd like to just run through some of our responses to the comments that were made, obviously the ones in opposition. Um, other thing that I will do, if you would, excuse me, one moment, is I will just for the record, hand over, uh, Mr. Stephen O'Masta's written commentary. He was not able to finish within the three minutes, so I'm gonna hand this over to, would you like it, Mr. Chairman, or over to Ms. Barkowski? Okay, with that, um, there was, and I'm going a little bit out of order here, but there was a lot of concern about the traffic and safety, uh, that would be implicated with the proposed reasonable accommodations. Again, we are not changing the use and the commission has a memorandum in the record from Mark Vertucci, a licensed traffic engineer with Fussin' O'Neill, confirming that to be the case. The commission also has letters in the record from the Brookfield Police Department as well as the Candlewood Fire Department confirming that there are no safety concerns with the proposed reasonable accommodations and in fact, I believe it was the volunteer fire department that say, said it would improve emergency access on-site. Um, there was a lot of throwing legal terms around, a self-induced hardship, the thirty illegal spots, the judge overruled this and overruled that. Those were different applications with different legal standards. Self-induced hardship is a term of art used with respect to variance applications. That's not what we have here, so I'd like the commission to keep in mind, different applications, different legal standards than what the commission has before it now. Um, regarding, I'm, I'm not going to go into a tit for tat, Mr. Chairman, about how many events were held and how many were not. We have information in the record from SoCo. Again, I personally reviewed their event records going back over a decade and I personally calculated the, on average, eight events per year. Not withstanding Mr. Visserka's comments that I'm going to say whatever I'm going to say, whatever I need. Uh, I am held to ethical standards as a licensed attorney in the state of Connecticut and that applies here. Um, there, uh, let's see, there's been reference a number of times and I truly am confused to a thirty-person limit on-site. Neither myself nor Mr. O'Masta or anyone else on the leadership of the applicants understands where this thirty-person limit comes from. It may go back to the thirty pers, thirty spaces previously approved by this commission, but again, to be clear, there is no occupancy limitation set by this commission, nor could there be. The occupancy is set by the state and local fire marshal at a hundred and fifteen people on-site. Uh, the last thing I have to address, and I do this cautiously, Mr. Chairman, and I will of course say, I, I don't take this lightly. Um, we had a comment from, I believe Commissioner Arment's husband, who spoke about allegedly, uh, SoCo and/or VFW members allegedly harassing Commissioner Arment regarding her involvement or prior decisions on the site. He spoke very voraciously about opposing this application and again, we had a request for a recusal in the record for Commissioner Grimes because he allegedly said something in favor of the applicants and I do have to voice my concern as counsel for the applicants regarding respectfully Commissioner Arment's impartiality when it comes to ruling on this application. Uh, the bylaws for the commission explain that disqualification is required when there is either the personal or financial interest that, and I'm paraphrasing here, personal or financial interest that, uh, forces the commissioner to not essentially be able to make an impartial decision on the application. And given the testimony we heard, we heard from Commissioner Arment's husband and the allegedly harassing information, I do have to voice my concerns regarding her impartiality and will put a request for the record for her recusal on this application. It is her decision, but I do have to voice that and I do it cautiously and I do not take that lightly, Mr. Chairman. Frankly, I've never been in this situation before in the decade that I've been doing this.
I'll get to speak to that as well.
No, sir.
I've got no real reaction to my wife whatsoever on any of this.
Mr. Chairman, I'll ask that that be stripped from the record. So with that, um, I will pause and see if the commission has any other questions. Um, certainly, I know I made the request, Commissioner Arment certainly, of course, has the opportunity through you, Mr. Chairman, to respond to the request and then I do have closing comments, but I'll pause there for just a moment.
I will take it out of advisement and talk to our talents early on, you're required, but concerned about Ms. Arment recusing herself. Does anyone? Yeah, just looking, I don't know if somebody has any questions or.
I can clarify, Mr. Chairman, through, through you to Commissioner Grimes, those were my responses to the public comments and then I'm pausing for questions and then I have some closing comments, if I may. No, no, that's not a problem. Okay, all right. Uh, with that, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I will end where I started, which is the law of reasonable accommodations. Commission will have to bear with me, I'm gonna put on my lawyer hat here for a second. Uh, the law for reasonable accommodations under the Americans with Disabilities Act is clear. A public entity like this commission must reasonably accommodate a disabled individual or entity on behalf of disabled individuals in, by modifying its rules, policies, practices, or services. Whether a reasonable accommodation is required is determined via a multi-step test. Uh, different courts use different verbiage, three elements versus four, uh, but the test really at its essence is the same. Uh, it asks whether the person or entity seeking the reasonable accommodation is disabled within the meaning of the ADA, whether the accommodation is reasonably necessary, and whether the accommodation will fundamentally or unreasonably alter the nature or purposes of zoning. Uh, again, we have a memorandum from Attorney Beecher on this very issue that was submitted before the last hearing. Regarding the first prong, the law defines disability within the meaning of the ADA as a physical or mental impairment that substantially limits one or more major life activities, a record of such an impairment or being regarded as having an impairment. Law is also clear that evidence regarding individual disabilities is not required, as I've mentioned, but that an entity can prove it on a collective basis. Here, the commission has received significant evidence regarding the disabilities of the applicant members in the form of letters, verbal testimony, and of course, I'm going to keep highlighting this, Mr. O'Masta's sworn affidavit regarding the number of members and the number of the approximate, uh, disabled members within those numbers. Uh, those are approximately eighty active SoCo members, twenty-five percent of whom are disabled, approximately fifty active VFW members, ninety-eight percent of whom are disabled with disability ratings from the Veterans Administration, and twenty-four active auxiliary members, two of whom are disabled. We meet the first prong. Regarding the second, whether the accommodation is reasonably necessary, so the law says that this requires balancing the cost to the commission with the cost to the applicants if the accommodation is not granted. Law also says that the accommodation is necessary when it will, and this is a quote, affirmatively enhance a disabled party's, party's quality of life by ameliorating the effects of the disability. Uh, this request to add parking, lighting, and sign is, all of which are permitted in the zone, by the way, in one form or the other, we seek this reasonable accommodation without altering the use, but with certainty that it will improve the quality of life of our members. This comes at little to no cost to the commission. Any applicant can come before this commission and file a zoning application, as the commission well knows, and the administrative costs associated with the application are minor and courts have found that to be the case. Uh, but again, the cost to the applicants, if this is not granted, is significant and devastating. I won't rehash the testimony that the commission heard, but we're literally preventing disabled people from attending events and meetings at this club. Uh, without the accommodation, our members, many of whom are veterans, are going to be unable to access the club for events and for VA services or they're forced to park across a busy street and risk accessing the club on foot. For our members who have disabilities and frankly, even for those who don't, that's devastating, prohibitive, and shameful. Uh, moreover, Mr. Chairman, I believe you pointed out at the last hearing, there is a provision in the regulations, uh, that provides that any parking sharing agreement needs to be commemorated by a written agreement on, uh, between the parties. So as you pointed out, Mr. Chairman, Candlewood East's, uh, willingness to help us for these events, that could go away at any time, that is potentially subject to enforcement and then we truly have no ability to have our members access the site, even if they're willing to risk parking across the street. Uh, lastly, the courts look at whether a reasonable accommodation are going to undermine or unreasonably alter zoning. The cases are pretty clear, that's not the case. Attorney Beecher explicitly said that in his memorandum to the commission as well and I agree. So the test is simple, but I'd encourage the commission to look at some of the cases that we cited in our June twentieth letter, given this is an unusual application and is obviously a legal one, but there is one case in particular that's helpful and illustrating the commission's obligation here. Uh, there was a two thousand and three case against the city of New London. Uh, it's, the plaintiff's name was First Step Bank, which was a nonprofit agency working with disabled individuals. In that case, and it was a long case, but regarding reasonable accommodation specifically, and we quoted this in our town hall letter, the court noted that the commission was obligated to make an accommodation with respect to pedestrian traffic and to find a means of mitigating potential safety concerns. City's failure to do so, uh, was a failure to provide a reasonable accommodation because the city could have granted the application at no cost to itself and without jeopardizing pedestrian safety. As we've heard repeatedly here throughout this public hearing, this improves safety conditions in and around the site and Mr. Vertucci confirmed that. Uh, I'll also note, stepping away from the law, that the accommodations, practically speaking, are narrowly tailored. Uh, you had asked, Mr. Chairman, about the number of parking spaces compared to our members, the size of the sign. So we've requested forty-nine total spaces on-site and we did so by looking at what our site can safely accommodate. Keep in mind, we've designed a turnaround on-site so that vehicles can more safely circulate on-site, uh, without having to exit onto Candlewood Lake Road. And we also looked at the number of our members, forty-nine of our fifty active VFW members are disabled and if you add in the disabilities of the SoCo members and the auxiliary, uh, we're well above the forty-nine, but we've tailored this narrowly to ensure that we can accommodate as many disabled members on-site at, at one time. Uh, the, the sign, uh, at your insistence, again, Mr. Chairman, we took a closer look at federal highway administration standards for the design of roadway signs and we asked, again, Fussin' O'Neill to take a look at that and they calculated a sign of sixteen square feet, which we've agreed to, so we reduced the sign. And last but not least, the lighting, I'll note by my reading of the regulations, the lighting we're proposing on-site is actually permitted by the regulations, there's no modification to what's permitted, but of course, we're including it here as part of our reasonable accommodation, given the language in the nineteen eighty-nine special permit that said that any change to the lighting on-site should come back to this commission in one way or another. Uh, last but not least, I will note that, um, let me see, the, I, I already mentioned that the, uh, police department and Candlewood Fire Department did not have concerns with this proposal. I believe it was the volunteer fire department said this improves on-site. So with all of that, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I'll thank you for your time and your patience. I respectfully request approval. Uh, I believe that the ADA demands it and it's time to afford, uh, our applicant's members, the disabled members in particular, many of whom are veterans, as this commission knows, uh, equal access to the site regardless of their disability.
Thank you, Attorney Gomes. All right, so.
Motion to close the public hearing with respect to two oh two Candlewood Lake Road with application Z dash two four dash three eight.
All right, there's a motion to close the public hearing. Thank you, Tony. Any discussions about closing the public hearing, the motion? No law favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Uh, public hearing is closed, we're taking no more data in. Um, we'll be deliberating next meeting.
Yeah, we've got sixty-five days.
No, we have sixty-five days from now. We have, actually, there's thirty-five days to close the public hearing, sixty-five days to come to a decision.
So does he not like the day?
That's correct, that's right. So, um, the next meeting is September twenty-sixth, the slide screen, as I mentioned on the other public hearing, um, we deliberate in front of everybody, but there's no interaction, no questions, no comments from the audience, it's just ourselves voting numbers.
If somebody does write in, they'll be able to read it.
Yes, any, any further, uh, letters or anything, it's not gonna be included in the package, it'll be put aside. So, thank you for all who came here tonight, I know it's been a long night. So, next on the agenda. So, I think we closed the public hearing in sixty-five days, we have, you know, number sixteen, two days before the next meeting. Um, this week, we, I think the only thing we have is table item, brass pieces, the torch, we're not gonna do, because we're gonna get to another, we're gonna stop. And then, Commissioner comments and.
Frank, you're a dyke.
Um, go, go right to the chairman.
Um, go, go right to attorney, if you want.
I'll make a motion to attorney.
All in favor of attorney?
Aye.
We're ten forty-nine.